I got 6:30. Okay. Let's open the planning board meeting for October 7th, 2024, 6:30. Schedule public hearings and open public meetings. 6:30. Open public hearing for city petition, city council petition, 5.25 dimensional regulations in RB and RC districts.
Hi, I'm going to defer to our consultant, Joseph Boyle, from the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission. He's been working with the Housing Committee, City Council, and the Board on this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Joseph Boyle from the Principal Planner in the MRPC. We're back tonight to discuss a couple of the petitions that you had sent to the City Council in our request. The first one regarding the dimensional requirements, amending the table of dimensional requirements in the RB and RC districts. What is the pleasure of the Board? What would you like for me tonight?
Well, explain what it is and why we should do it.
Okay. So, as you recall from last time, this came out of the Housing Committee, which was given instructions by the Mayor and passed them on to me to look for ways to modify the dimensional requirements or to modify the Leavenster zoning code to allow for the production of more housing. One of the earliest things we were able to zoom in on was the dimensional requirements in the RB and RC district. And I had come in before with a proposed zoning amendment which would change the dimensional table pretty significantly, eliminating several of the different categories. And the most important thing, eliminating the per-unit requirement in the square, in the minimum lot size in the RB and RC districts, and replacing it with a flat, just with a flat standard minimum lot size. This was brought to the City Council. We received some feedback there. Hoping to receive some feedback, some more feedback tonight. But the general sense that I got at the City Council meeting was that while they were supportive of the general principle of what we were trying to do, that not having a lot area per unit requirement at all was simply a step too far. And I would request that the Board modify this proposal. Not to, so that rather than eliminating the lot area requirement and replacing the dimensional table columns as shown here, that we rather reduce the numbers in the minimum lot area table, which have the per-unit requirements, just simply reduce those to a lower number while still keeping the lot area per, while still maintaining the principle of a minimum lot area per unit for multifamily housing. I would suggest something in the neighborhood of a 20% reduction for each of those. So, for example, the minimum lot area in the RC district is currently 5,000 non-wetland square feet per unit. I would suggest reducing that to four. The special permit multifamily in the RB district is currently 5,000 per unit. I would suggest reducing that to four. And the 8,500 per unit for by right multifamily in the RB district, I would suggest dropping that to seven. And this would, this would be a way to bring some people's properties, which are currently in non-conforming status, bring it into informant status. That will reduce the burden on them if they want to renovate their home and enlarge it, perhaps even add a unit. It would also make, it would make incremental additions of residential units like that easier without opening the floodgates on the big properties for a substantial increase in the number of units that are allowed.
So, what you just sent here on the by right multifamily, change that from eight to seven.
From 8,500 to 7,000.
And?
In RB.
In RB. In RB.
Yep.
And you had another reason for that, though. You talked to us, the first time we met, you had a reason. And it would be good to note it if we can get it out here, on why you think reducing the square footage of the lots would be a good thing.
Right. This isn't, the purpose here isn't reducing the square footage of the lots. The purpose, the real accomplishment here would be to increase the number of small properties in the RB and RC district. Single-family homes or things that are currently two-family homes that maybe can add a unit. A multifamily property that's a four, maybe adding one unit or two units, and achieving that type of small incremental growth. And so, which is really the lowest, is really the lowest, when you're talking about existing neighborhoods that are already built, that type of small, one at a time, here and there, growth is really the lowest impact way to add residential units.
Do we have any idea if we stop these numbers, how many additional areas might be allowable or available?
That, that question came up, came up last time. And we took our stand at the MRPC using the proposal that had been made already. And we got numbers that frankly, we just don't think are plausible. Something like 20,000 more units, it says, could have been built in the RB and RC district under the new zoning, then under the current zoning. And we just don't believe that. You look at individual lot results, and it's coming up with silly numbers of 120 units on an acre and a half. It's just doing a, it's just doing a...
That would be a density issue.
But it can't happen.
And you have to have projects.
Yeah, you can't make a setback. You can't make your parking.
Right, right.
Right.
Right. So, we don't think they're giving us legitimate numbers. We're using the MBTA modeling tool. It's a really great tool for what it was designed for. We tried to see if we could use it for something else, and I can report that, no, we can't.
No, so I get what you're trying to do. And I'm obviously supportive of the purpose, but I don't know how to go along with something if we can't know whether it's actually going to do anything. Anything meaningful?
Well, it was going to allow storefronts on the bottom level as well.
That's different.
Oh, all right. Right, right. This is two amendments.
This is just changing the amount of lot size. And I don't know how many additional potential buildable areas there will be. So, I don't know whether that's the right number to move it by or not. May as well just pick any number at that point. Why, why the 20%?
Do they still have the conform to the posable regulations?
Yeah, yes.
Per unit?
Yes.
And they have to have space for that, the marked, after parking?
Right, there's still the marked parking. They still have to meet all the setback requirements, the lot coverage, all those other requirements.
Yeah, I'm not worried about controlling. I'm worried about whether this is actually going to accomplish anything. If we're making a lot of changes and doing all of these things, and then we'll actually not net what we needed to, whereas if we did, and I have no idea what the number is, but if we did 25% instead of 20 or something, maybe that would make it, I just don't know. And I don't know how to pick a number at random and say, this seems like a good one. But I just don't know how to make policy about it.
Well, to come at these numbers, I mean, let's, let's look at what the numbers are. We're talking about minimum lot size in a residential district for multifamily units. And what, and the approximate density that would be consistent with neighborhood care. We're also talking about proposing a zoning amendment, which we hope will pass the City Council. So, why did I go to four but not go down to three?
Or four and a half, or why, why that number?
A 20%, a 20% reduction is significant enough to accomplish something. But meanwhile, why not go further? Because we have to get this passed to the City Council. So, yes, this number represents a...
That's the maximum you think you could go with the man still having a gas?
Yes, while still doing something. I mean, reducing from 5,000 to 4,600 square feet wouldn't do anything. But going down from, and remember, this is not just a minimum lot size for a single-family home. This is referring to multifamilies. So, we're talking about a 20,000 square foot lot. Okay? If it...
But the lot is only 12,000.
What's that?
Okay, a two-family dwelling.
Oh, right.
Is on 12,000.
Right. I'm imagining a theoretical 20,000 square foot lot, unbuilt lot that could be built.
Okay.
Under the special permit multifamily here, they could get down to 5,000 per unit, and that could potentially be a four-unit building. This would allow them to apply for a five-unit building. It's incremental. And it's incremental for the new projects, and it's incremental for existing homes. And it's meant to be.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to do it by a special permit? No, by right. It's going to be by right.
So, it's currently, according to the top, to the top row. In RB, you have both a special, a by right, and then you're allowed to lower your lot sizes by special permit to these.
So, most of our existing properties like this have, they have smaller lots than 7,000? I think there's a lot of stuff that's grandfathered the way it is, but I think there's a lot of smaller lots in this, too.
There are a lot of smaller lots. Now, this, the smallest ones tend to be in the RC.
Yeah.
Clearly, RC lots are a little smaller than RB. Do, I, I, I do is to emphasize that this lot size change would apply, is applying to the multifamily residences. It wouldn't change lot sizes for singles and twos. So, the idea, we're not taking a single-family lots minimum from 5,000 to 4,000. That's...
Just strictly for RB.
Right. This would, right. This would be, so it, really, this isn't going to control how small your lots are. This is going to, this is going to affect how many units get built on lots that get built. And then...
Yeah, your minimum lot size doesn't change.
Right. By the way, we've been talking about lot size. The other change that I had proposed, the other meaningful change was in lot frontage. I had it going down from 120 to 50. What it has, what, what, the current zoning is 120 lot frontage by right. And in that special permit, you can go down to 100. This issue of what is... What we, what we can practically go back to the City Council with, I really need to lean on this Board and your judgment. I think that reducing those frontages would be, would be helpful.
So, you're saying by right multifamily, drop it to 100? Drop it to 50?
I am asking...
You don't have that in here.
No. If, if you look at the, the initial proposal and replace it with the following rows, I have it dropped to 50 on lot frontage for, you know, for as the universal frontage that applies to everything. And the way it exists in your, in your zoning now, two families, single families, all others have, in the, in the RB zone has a 50-foot frontage. And then there are these larger frontages for multifamily. I was proposing to take those larger families for multifamily, bring them down to the 50 that applies to everything else. I asked you, as the Leavenster Planning Board, what do you think would be a good move there on the, on the frontage?
The problem I have here is on the, on the petition is that unless I'm looking at it wrong, I don't have the whole thing. And I've got no change on lot frontage.
Very bad.
You're looking at the one that's very bad.
Because this says 120 here.
Right.
By right. There's nothing on the bottom. So, but that's, but that's only for conversion. That's the same as conversion, 50 here, conversion. There should be another line down here for by right multifamily to change that. That's not yet.
I had, what I was originally proposing to do was eliminate all of those other rows.
And just do 50.
And so, that that all, 10,000 square foot, 50-foot frontage, applied universally throughout the, throughout the RB.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Yep. And that the 50 would apply universally to the RB.
If we, if we keep that there, okay, and if we go from, you know, down to the seven, that leaves that line in there. So, you're going to change on this to 120 in that column to 50.
Yes, there, yes.
Yeah, for this to be right.
How to write it up? Yes. But before actually talking about how to format it, I, first of all, does the Board, I, I was proposing to eliminate the difference between the by right dimensions and then a reduction by special permit.
That's right.
I just had a single...
You were proposing that. But when the City Council came back and said they wanted the per unit.
Yep.
Okay, that changed, you know, your proposal that we have to then have to have a, a number in that column.
Yeah. Yes. And right now, the number in that column, in the lot frontage column, is 50 for everything. That 50 on, on the, on the second table, that's applying to everything. All of these, all of these dimensional requirements, the front is the width, the side yard is the...
It doesn't say that. Well, no, because, because you replace it, then that means I'm going to put the units back in here. You say you give me this on the top and then say, replace it with the following.
Right.
Well, if I keep the square per unit in there from, okay, that has to go down to the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, and a frontage for that has got up to the bottom. But I'm saying, it's not here.
It has to go down to the bottom because that's what the City Council is demanding.
Right, that's what the City Council requested. So, that's what you're making a change. So, I'm not saying it's, so we've got to add it to the bottom here.
What I'm proposing here is, is let's just forget about this bottom. And what we'll do instead is just change, change some numbers on the top. Change the square that says 8,500 per unit, change the square that says 5,000 to unit. And also, potentially, and I want, I wanted to hear, very curious, I would suggest changing the cells that say 120 and 100 as well to reduce that.
That's all right. I'm just getting the format correct.
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to format it in the top column. And so that, so...
Correct, correct. Because you had, it's missing on the bottom, and it wouldn't work. So, that means that the 120 changes to 50. They will change to 50.
Everything changes to 50.
Everything in the lot frontage column.
But not the lot width. The lot width remains at 80.
Right.
Right.
The side setbacks and the front yard setbacks will all remain the same.
Yep.
You do understand why we have lot width at 80 and frontage at 50? Because you've got a lot going like that.
Yeah, sometimes lots get wider, yeah.
Okay. But that is, yeah, okay. So, I wanted to make sure we identified that.
Yes.
Not an issue, okay.
Yep, that's not an issue.
What do you want at 80 instead of 50 for frontage?
Well, we could do 80, 80. I mean, 80...
And make it square.
Make it square. But 50 will make it, 50 can go to 80. 80, you can't go to 50. So, you can, if you leave it with the 50, it doesn't...
It's the other way around.
Right.
Yeah.
80, you can go to 50.
80, you can go to...
50, you can't go to 80.
Right.
So, there's one, there is one question that's actually prior to these. I was, my, my proposal got rid of the special permit for reduced dimensional requirements entirely. And there's, so that there's just, there, there was just one set of dimensional requirements to follow. What's the pleasure of the Board? Do you think that it would be better for us to retain the special, the two-tier?
Keep a special permit in there. I, I, I think, because that gives us some control. Okay. And I know the, the City Council, their concern was when we had that, was, was with the minimum lot area.
Yeah, per unit, right.
Per, per unit, okay. So, I don't have a problem changing those numbers down. And it's a minor change, and I agree with you. You know, we can't seem to come up with a number. I think we're going to try a little bit better, you know, a different program or something.
Yeah. Do you mean for front, come up with a number for the frontages?
I mean, by number of units, it's, we're going to gain out of it. You know, but that'll work itself out. And if it needs to be amended, you amend it at that point. You have a baseline to start.
To really come up with a reliable number for you would require a lot-by-lot analysis. I think if, if the Board, and it would require doing a lot by now, every lot in the RB and RC just can go, take me into account, and they are, take you also into account when they're lots, when they're split. So, it's an enormous, it would be enormous amount of lot to come up with a number. I think that if the Board really, really feels that it needs more analysis on these, I could do lot, like lot-by-lot analyses and come up with five or six good examples. What about this, you know, what about this 8,000 square foot lot here? And what about this 32,000 feet lot here? And show how the zoning changed to reflect those, if you thought that would be helpful and we need to move this out further.
You'd have to presume that everybody's going to do it on their lot.
That's right.
Hard number.
Which is a real, you can't, and it doesn't already exist.
That's what we couldn't do. Everybody added a unit on a lot that was eligible, eligible, which is not going to happen. Yeah, right now, literally, I have no idea if this will come.
But it's not, it's not, yeah, it's not. A number they had to strip back here. That's all, we didn't cut it. No, you know, it just, you know, the justifications behind it. Yeah, it's going to be clean. And then once it's cleaned up, if it needs amendments, I mean, on the, on the five, you know, it would be nice to have just a separate sheet, not with the new numbers on the, that are on the proposal with all the other stuff that's replaced. You know, so we have it. It's like I said, I didn't, we haven't sent this out.
Yes, I, I had sent in a letter to the Planning Board that actually showed the...
Showed the differences.
RC, as to the way that the changes are made.
Oh, and the change.
It's just that since it was one cell, I thought it was easy enough to...
Right. And that's the only change.
Are we ready for the channel?
No, we're not. I'm going to open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions or comments or criticisms about this hearing that deals with the amendment to the regulations for, for the dimensional regulations for RB and RC districts? Does the Board have anything else on, on this particular section?
Are we hosing or continuing?
Well, we're going to get amended copies, right? Are we continuing? Or are you going to try to get us some examples? Because...
So, we're going... I ain't waiting for, I, I...
I mean, we agree, you know, we support this. We're just trying to help you get it through the Council.
So, make some examples. What's your pleasure?
Now, do you, we can keep it, is this coming before the City Council? Are they waiting for us?
The City Council's waiting on the planning board. But if the planning board continues it, they can continue there.
I think, I think that would be good to help.
Yes. Why don't we do that? So, we'll continue it.
Motion to continue.
Continue until we have the more information?
Yes.
Yes.
So, do we have time on the next...
That'll help, that'll, that'll help the whole cause along.
We can do October 21st. Is that going to work? Will we have time to have something by then, Joseph?
October 20th? Yes, I'll, yes, I'd be able to have some examples for you in a certain way.
We have to...
That'd be great.
6:30?
It's 6:30 is already taken. We have to do 6:35.
Yeah. We hear you.
I will make the motion to continue the hearing until October 21st, 6:35.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by Jason.
Seconded by Jason.
Ed, I'm sorry, one last question. Did you want me to have different frontages for by right and special permit, or 50 for both?
Yeah, both.
Oh, 50 for both? Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you want us to split the lot? That was the other thing. You know, we talked about the...
Well, let's keep it consistent with the 50.
Okay.
And not confuse you.
Yep.
I have a motion made in seconded to October 31st. It's 21st. On 21st, brother. At 6:30?
6:35.
We have, most of us, we have...
6:35.
6:35, okay.
Thanks for the work.
I have a motion made in seconded. Oh, no, I can't. I can open it outside.
We already did.
We did, I did that.
Oh, you did, okay.
Started that.
All right. Motion made in your own favor, say I?
All right.
All right.
No, sorry.
Okay, next one.
So, we have the 6:30 at 1.
It'll be 2.
Now, a 6:30 open public hearing for a city council petition, 7-25 upper-story dwelling units.
And this is another one that the Housing Committee worked on with a consultant, Joseph Boyle, from the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission. So, again, I'm going to defer to him to introduce this to the Board.
Okay, so, as I was, as I was asked to review the residential zoning in the Leavensters residential zoning, looking for opportunities for authority housing, what, something that I zeroed in on was that, was your commercial districts, your business-owned districts. One thing that struck me is that your C district doesn't allow any housing at all. And there's a reason not to allow housing in certain commercial districts is that you don't want your potential economic development land to be completely taken over by residential development. At the same time, the right type of residential development can boost some of your commercial districts. And so, in your walkable, in your more walkable, more, more urban and more traditional neighborhoods, which grew up with things like corner stores, I thought it would be a good idea to allow them. So, I create, and looking at your existing zoning and looking at your categories, there is single-family homes and multifamily, and two-family homes. And there is apartments, multifamily dwellings. There wasn't specifically a use for upper-story dwelling units distinguished from a single-family home or a two-family home that, which would allow these residential uses to be put above storefronts while protecting underneath. So, creating this land use and adding it into certain, and adding it into certain districts, we thought was a way to, once again, promote the incremental growth and to promote residential developments in currently business-owned districts without infringing upon the economic development purposes of these districts.
Now, we do that in business B today.
Yes, yes, in BB. And this would expand it some more into...
RC MU2.
BBA. And yes, in MU2 and...
Just the yellow ones.
You'll notice I've also divided it at between four and five units into two different land uses. Upper-story dwelling units, one to four units, upper-story dwelling units, five or more units. So, that we are, all right. For example, in the RC district, it may be appropriate to have a unit or two above a corner store. It wouldn't be, whereas a, eight stories above them, that's the scale of development you'd want in the business district, not in the RC. In your B districts, your BA and BP districts, one to four units allowed by right, site plan authority for five or more units. So, there's a little more control for a little more intensive purposes. I thought it was good to divide in certain places, to divide it by size.
That's the way life used to be.
Yeah.
That's the way...
So, it would be in RC, and it'd be a special permit just to the planning board. You've added that.
It would be a special permit by the planning board.
And added, and then it's also added in MU2. It's in MU2 already? No, what's been added, right? So, is it RC with that in the table, right? I mean, in the, in the one that we, is in the levees? This is...
This hasn't changed.
This hasn't changed.
These are, for the most part, I followed apartment slash multifamily dwelling in, for the, for the permitting requirement.
So, RC, you want to add RC MU2 by right? Oh, not by right, but special permit. Okay, so, R C, you wanna add R C M U two by right, oh, not by right, special permit.
And B A, B B.
It's already like that, right? And then, D A, B B is, B B is already special, site plan approval, and D A would be the same thing, site plan approval.
You're saying it's already is for, for the multifamily dwelling units? Yeah, and this is if upper-story residential units are being treated differently?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that, yeah, let's remind them. Do we have any other discussion on that?
That's a good one.
That's a pretty simple one. I'll open it up the audience. Okay, I can open up the audience. Okay.
Do we have any recommendation?
No, you do have a thing to read it to the record.
Oh, I, I do.
Do you want me to read it from there?
Yes.
Yeah, it's from Michelle Seadore.
All right, I'll read it, I'll be quick. This is dated on Wednesday, October 2nd, and it relates to upper-story dwelling units. Thank you, this is directed to Stephanie, our clerk.
Assistant director.
Assistant director. Thank you for speaking with me the other day and for sending me the information regarding upper-story dwelling units. I was most interested in the upcoming changes to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, but this news was a pleasant surprise. Whatever we can do to add affordable housing to Leamster, I am wholeheartedly in favor of. Upper-story dwelling units can be designed to blend seamlessly within existing structures or businesses or brought into the conception process of a new built, business build. Several years ago, I found myself in a retail village that was created, this, this exact community of living above the retail spaces. I can't remember that town, it was near Cape Cod, although we don't have the most year-round beautiful weather of Santa Monica, the residents above Santa Monica's third street promenade are certainly an ideal source of design inspiration. On a related side note, I also think it would be great to have some kind of shared office creative space in the city, which I think was supposed to happen years ago but fell through. My great aunt, who has since passed away, used to live at 20 Main Street for years. Everyone in the town knew her, and she loved living there. In fact, it was she who alerted neighbors of the smell of smoke when the great electrical fire broke out and destroyed much of the building, and then her, and her then home. I look forward to hearing more about what comes of this meeting, the time for creative ingenuity for housing is now. Michelle Dore, 104 Eba Drive, Leamster.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we will make a recommendation.
Yeah, we have, this, this would be a recommendation to approve.
We have to close the hearing and then get on it after.
Okay. So I'm going to close the hearing.
A motion made in seconded to close the hearing?
Seconded by Carol.
Yes.
By Carol?
Yep.
That's a good one.
Okay. Both favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion carries. Open public meeting for site plan application for 508 Main Street map.
Thanks for everything.
He'll be back in front of you then.
Two, three, two.
Okay, yes.
On M U two.
Yeah.
Two, three, two, parcel nine, commercial office building.
We might as well open the next one, right?
Yeah. Open public hearing for special permit, floodplain application, 508 Main Street, map, two, three, two, parcel nine, commercial office building.
We lost our camera operator, and I'm pretty confident that's not gonna be on camera.
He's right there, he's right there.
No, I was just wondering, should we just, sorry, you wait for a beep, offstage, I don't wanna go back to floor.
Yeah. I can put the easel up over there if you guys want to.
That might be good.
Okay, then.
I'm gonna move it over there real quick.
Yeah, I can't quite get the entire thing.
You gotta move back to the other side.
Yeah, move back to the old spot. Like a man who brings his own easel, that's good.
That's good, I know it, he's always.
That's good.
Nice job, Chris.
For the record, Chris Anderson, we're handing it to Derek here on behalf of Charbel Sadi for the reconstruction of, or the construction of a new office building and the location of an existing structure. Just to orientate everybody here, we have 508 Main Street, which is currently a multi-use building, it has electrician in it, a repair facility, and a used car dealership. We'll orientate ourselves here, we have Main Street that runs along the bottom of the page, and we have River Street that runs along the side, and the big blue area right there is the National River. Currently, the property is predominantly paved with areas of overgrown brush along the immediate edge of the National River. The property has two structures, the primary structure, which is currently in use and fully operational, and a second, more dilapidated structure closer to the National River. So it's the intent of the applicant to redevelop that existing structure within its existing footprint, with the noted exception that we're squaring off the building for construction purposes, but besides that, the structure in itself relative to size and shape remain generally intact. As part of the overall project, what we're doing is reconfiguring the parking along the north side of the property to provide an area for seven parking spaces, as well as providing ADA accessibility to the actual structure. In addition to that, we are providing enhanced accessibility around the structure as well. Currently, there is an old gravel path that goes around the perimeter of the property. It's the intent that we're gonna repave that and add additional green space throughout the area in order to offset the increase in the perverties in this general location in order to provide enhanced accessibility. The existing structure is not gonna be touched, it's gonna stay as it is and whatnot. We are currently going before the conservation commission for it to have some intent, this is a very conservation-centric project, we have the National River, we do have floodplain, which is one of the permits we're here for tonight, for work within the floodplain districts. Currently, the floodplain elevation in this area under the current FEMA firm panels sits at around 327, which encroaches just up into the developable area of the property, but doesn't encroach any further than the rear portion of the building. In the future, whenever FEMA does issue their updated FEMA firm panels, the elevation drop by seven, so around seven, but as the current FEMA is at the 327, we're within that jurisdictional area. Relative to utilities, intending to tie into the existing sewer line via a new pump system for domestic sewer, water will tie into River Street, and the stormwater system on the site will utilize the general decrease in the perverties area on the overall property as it means mitigating impact of the spill. And like I said earlier, that's going through conservation review as well. We did go through a department head meeting, we felt of various departments, we did review a couple of their concerns. One major note, I will say, that came up during the process was concern over vehicle entry along Main Street. The police department brought up a concern that they don't want people taking a left-hand turn out of the, out of the property for safety reasons. We did review that with the applicant, and he is more than willing to restrict that to a right turn only, so they're not crossing that road to traffic. If they wanted to go northbound along Route 15, they would effectively have to extend, or continue through the property, get onto River Street, and then take the light going in that direction. We did receive department head comments as well, and the review letter from the planning director, given an opportunity to formally respond to those, because we're still working through with conservation concerns, so we would be requesting a continuance tonight in order to address conservation, and then once conservation is cleared away, we'll come back for this board and address any other comments. Where is it, seven feet? Way along the outside portion of the property here.
Seven in a row, right there.
Right there. It's currently utilized as a parking area, but it's not formally insured. So what we're doing is formally delineating the line.
So you didn't spell it out, but ideally, it would be one-way.
So this would be two-way. Yep, they would have two-way traffic going along the park porch of the building, one-way along the west side against the National River, and that would force them to come out to the River Street, which will be shrunk.
That whole backside road will be one-way in only.
That would be one-way.
And that eliminates the right turn too also.
Of course, the comment I see from the police is they recommend a traffic study here, you're saying that's revised.
That was one of the things that we reviewed, relative to traffic, the square footage of the building is incredibly small, it's only like eight hundred square feet, so no matter what we do, our traffic analysis, I can show us anything but a few extra trips. But we did review that, and that was one of the main concerns, was the fact that this property somehow did not get a DOT restriction of turning maneuvers, so, but the applicant is more than happy to address that.
And that resolves their traffic.
Actually, we addressed their comments.
Okay. Did you meet all the parking spaces, right, Chris?
Yeah, you get twenty-five.
You got eleven? So it's only conservation that's upstairs?
Yeah. So we're just waiting for conservation?
Correct, and I have a meeting with them, their last meeting of the month, so hoping to have that wrapped up by then.
Yeah.
So we're moving into next one, then?
So, do you want it November?
Yep, so that's what.
Right.
November fourth?
Fourth at six thirty?
I am, I'm gonna open it for the audience.
Okay.
Okay, let's open to the audience, anybody have any comments and questions?
Might I ask a question?
Yes.
Just again, for the record.
I'm Joseph Boyle from the Rochester Regional Planning Commission. I'm interested in the fact that a commercial office building is built in 2024. Is this being built to, in the hopes of attracting tenants, or is this being done by a company for its own use, or?
It's still up in the air, the applicant does have a few people of interest into it, but it's more of a built-in, it'll come type of moment. Because the property's commercial is very limited, it's very limited, and it's becoming more of a safety concern.
It's gonna be a great improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a dilapidated building now, so.
I walked into it and I walked right out of it.
All right, I move to, continue the hearing until November fourth at six thirty, I'm looking?
Six thirty.
Seven, seven.
Okay, hold on. Paul.
Paul.
Paul motion.
Seven.
November fourth at six thirty.
Six thirty. I have a motion made in seconded for November fourth at six thirty to continue. Any further discussion? You're not on the call for the vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pleas or no, motion carries.
And that was for site plan, right?
Yes.
Right.
Special permit is none.
Yep.
Okay, now it's the public permit. Same, same.
Yep, same, same motion, just six thirty-one. Yep, second.
Same as second.
Motion made in seconded for the special permit on the floodplain application, commercial office building, to continue to November fourth at six thirty-one. Any discussion? You're not on the call for the vote, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Open public meeting for site plan application for eight, eight, one, Marion Avenue, map two, six, one, parcel one, restricted with drive-through.
Hi, do you have a computer or laptop you wanted to connect to the TV?
Do.
We have that ready for you if you, if you want me with you. We got, for your request, we got the longer cable.
Smart.
But someone has to figure out how to open this because I. Maybe you need stronger dunks.
Who brought the pocket knife? Didn't.
Um, no, part of one of them, one end goes into the computer and one end goes along.
You might need it even longer. That's good table up there.
We ordered it.
Yeah, once you open it up.
No, it's gonna go, just barely.
Yeah.
In the wall, right in the wall, Jason.
Right here.
Yep.
Here you go.
We're all the way through here, now we're gonna find out two chairs.
Somebody wanna crawl?
No. Not me.
I'm too old.
I gotta.
Long arms, good.
Next time we'll talk about wireless connectivity.
Yeah.
One step at a time.
I know it, huh?
Just get an Apple TV.
It costs nothing.
There's a wireless connection somewhere, we can do it. So just get an Apple TV. We need to turn it on.
Yeah, that's right there. We're fairly new to this setup here.
There it is, that's it.
There you go.
Chair, did you already open it while we were confused over there?
Yeah.
All right, ready to go? Good work. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Kerry McCormick, I'm Director of Development with Crosspoint Associates. Just some background on Crosspoint, Crosspoint was originated back in the late eighties. We're based in Newton, Massachusetts. We're really a community grocery-anchored shopping center, is our main focus, we have about three and a half million square feet, we own and manage it, so we have operations, we do our own property management, and really focused on the New England market. So we purchased the Twin City Plaza about a little over a year, year and a half ago, and, you know, it's, it fits in line with a lot of the centers that we have in our portfolio. I kinda work on the development side, so look at larger-scale capital improvements, and we're looking at the portfolio and kinda continuing some of the improvements that they've made over the past years and more recently to continue, kinda upgrades. It definitely needs a few to get it to be a more modern center for, for the community. So I just wanna introduce the team that we have tonight. So with me tonight, Robin Kieran is with Daisy Our Design, our architect, Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering, our civil engineer, and also Sean Kelly from Chapel Engineering, our traffic engineer. And I just wanna kinda just note a couple items in the, on the site just that are unique, and then I'll turn it over to Brandon Lee to go over kinda some of the civil and site improvements. So the site's unique in that the portion that we own and operate is all to the back of the center, the Hannover, it's also splits both Leamster and the, to the, the Luther Cyan line down the middle, kinda Pittsburgh is to the left, and Leamster to the right. So the site that we're looking at tonight is for a site plan approval for the redevelopment of the workers' credit union and converting that to a Starbucks, so we'll be presenting that to you tonight. I think that's the majority of my thoughts. Also, we did, there was some question about whether we needed site plan approval with Pittsburgh.
Yes, you're gonna have to check with them.
Yeah, we did, so I sent that, we checked, we got both a review from their building commissioner and their planning board, planning agent, and.
And they're satisfied?
Yeah, and they sent that in email like, like early this, like mid, a little after midday.
Oh.
I have the letters and stuff.
Okay, I, I didn't catch it.
No problem. I can hand it over to you. So, I sent that, we checked, we got both a review from their building commissioner and their planning board, planning agent, and.
And they're satisfied?
Yeah, and they sent that in email like, like early this, like mid, a little after midday.
Oh.
I have the letters and stuff.
Okay, I didn't catch it.
No problem.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering. The site's located 881 Marion Ave. To the south of the property, to the right of the page is Route 2. To the west is Marion Ave and Whalen Street. See right in the middle, the blue line, the property sits in both the city of Pittsburgh and the city of Leinsburg. So, it's called Twin Cities Plaza. To the north is Carriage Court. Carriage Court actually comes off of Marion Ave and then traverses through the property as well as to the east. And then, you have all the commercial developments around the property. Currently, the Workers' Credit Union is shown in the center of the plan in the area of work. Property has access easements across Carriage Court as well as access and parking easements across the border to the west of the property. These easements take them to Marion Ave and Whalen Street. This is the existing Workers' Credit Union Bank. Currently has three drive-throughs. Building is 1,841 square feet. To the right is Carriage Court and to the bottom is Twin City Plaza Drive. This is a proposed Starbucks with drive-thru. The existing building will be expanded. Total square foot will be 2,466, so an increase of about 600 square feet. Expansion is located to the rear of the building. To the bottom of the page is the front, the main entrance to the building. And then, to the left is the drive-thru window. As I, come into the site off of Carriage Court and then off of Twin City Plaza Drive. There's a entrance into this property. There's a total of 28 parking spaces shown within the vicinity of the building. And then, as you come in, it's all one-way. There's a 12-foot wide drive-thru lane that has a queue of 15 vehicles. And then, bypass lane to the right. To the bottom, there are four or five spaces. Those are time-limited parking spaces. Then, as you come around, especially in the front, this is the main entrance. There's also a patio to the right. And then, as you come around the drive-thru to the back is a dumpster enclosure. It consists of a six-foot-high cedar wood fence enclosure. And then, come around, it's all one-way. There's an exit to the top left of the page that also has a do not enter sign. It's an exit only. And you come around to the angled parking spaces. To the left of the angled parking spaces, there's a concrete sidewalk proposed. This provides pedestrian access and connection from the parking spaces to the left of the site and to the building. There's a handicap stalls as well as a crosswalk. And then, as you egress the site, there's dedicated left turn lane as well as a dedicated right turn lane. Landscaping of the property will be upgraded. There will be four additional new trees. This is, sorry, five new.
Can I ask you about the drive-thru before you, when you, you only have the screen up? So, they're going to queue up where on this?
Around the. That's two lanes, right? It's two lanes, right? I can't see on that side, but.
So, if the queue backs up, or if the traffic to back up on the, on the Carriage Court, is that?
No, it will not back up onto Carriage Court.
Will back up on the Twin City Drive.
Maybe, would you want me to point on the screen?
So, the drive, it's not backing into the main drive, right?
So, it's not getting anywhere near Marion Ave?
No. But, I mean, is there the parking from other buildings in that area, right?
Yep, so here's the, the drive-thru window, I guess.
Yeah.
Amicus.
Yeah.
So, you have 15 vehicles that wrapped all the way around.
Yeah.
All the way back to here.
Yep.
That's 15 vehicles there. It doesn't even get into the drive aisle or onto Twin City Plaza or Carriage Court.
So, if you just want to go around and park. You have a.
How wide are the lanes that comes around?
12 feet.
And that's all one-way.
Right. Are the way, how wide are the lanes?
12 feet.
They're both 12 feet wide.
And the parking that's required for the square footage of the building, do you have, do you meet the requirements and exceed the requirements?
That's all the side, yeah.
The space requirement is 25 spaces and we have 28.
Nice. Handicap.
Yep, got two handicap stalls there.
So, easy to seat on the tour again, so.
Oh, thank you. I have that. I just wanted to talk about it, you know?
Continue.
I just want to make sure, no.
Someone's paper here.
You can move around.
Actually, I'm only asking because the police comment suggests this is an issue and I don't see the issue.
Well, do you want, if, if, they think this is an issue? If the one in Leinster can work.
I'm not disagreeing with you, that's why I was, that's why I was trying to figure where the.
That's the, that's the best argument to make.
Not only that, there's another one down there.
Yep.
That's the one she's got.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know.
It's not open yet.
Oh, that one, yeah. But, the one in Leinster, the one that's been there for.
Behind Men's Warehouse?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever the hell it is.
Yeah.
I, I know.
All right, it's good.
Okay, no, no, sorry, sorry for the digress.
Just so we can see the snow storage.
Anyway.
Yeah.
And we also interrupted him, so.
Yes.
Right there on the green space.
So, so the bench and 28 parking spaces, 15 vehicle queues, all within the property. The landscaping will be upgraded, five new trees. We're proposing abundant planes, five new shrubs as well as ground cover. The lighting will be upgraded as well. We have new full LED lights on the property as well as, along the building. Snow storage is also provided on the property as shown in the landscape areas. There's also a snow storage area to the west of the existing Singapore restaurant. Although, there is a, will be a reduction of 30 parking spaces. The total parking for the entire plaza will be that. The zoning requirement is 940 spaces and there is 1,064 spaces for the entire plaza.
And you're, you're decreasing the appropriate surface too, right? Is that where the landscaping is going?
Getting the landscaping.
That's right. There's a decrease of 5,236 less pavement.
And that current, uh, structure, that current piece of property is sort of isolated inside Traffic Island's curbed, is that going to change?
That's not going to change. It's still wrapped up in the landscape.
So, this raised, the raised sidewalk, is that, is that what you're using as a border?
There is a raised sidewalk here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's there currently and that's going to stay, is that what?
That's new.
No, that, that's still, yeah.
That, that provides pedestrian access for parked cars in the back as well as along the angled spaces to access the main entrance. Any other questions on the, on the lots of utilities?
Thank you.
I think it's an improvement over what we got, so.
It's a good spot for it.
So.
Yeah, because it gets it off of Marion Ave.
Yep.
Because the one that was approved was up front before. It didn't have the queue, there was just no, so. Yeah, it's different, it's a whole different plan.
That's good.
Some of the existing utilities will remain. Existing water, gas, and electric will remain. There will be a new grease trap. 1,500 gallon grease trap will be in the building tied to the existing sewer. Stormwater management system will be upgraded. There'll be new deep-sump flooded catch basins, proprietary water quality devices, a new recharge system. It's all designed for vast EP stormwater management standards. Water quality provided, recharge provided, reduction peak runoff. As Kerry mentioned, the, they reached out to the city of Pittsburgh and we will provide that information. But, the building commissioner, Felix Terrell, noted in an email, in a letter, that no zoning unit is required. Also, the city planner from the city of Pittsburgh, Chantelle Fleck, noting in the email, at this time, the legal council has determined that nothing within the zoning ordinance will trigger a site plan.
Hi, good evening. I'm Robin Kieran on the architect with Dazer Design. So, I can talk about the exterior of the building. Simon function while we're on the mouse. So, this is the, the current building in its current shape and form. So, obviously, very dated, very landlocked, a lot of asphalt, no greenery. So, Brendan talked about how we're going to soften the overall site, the approach, the rear, a lot less impervious surface. Our intent is to renovate this building. So, we would be basically scraping off kind of all of the non-essential elements, the large, very heavy drive-through canopy on the left. And then, the kind of Mansard-style overhang around the entire perimeter. One too fast, sorry. So, as Brendan talked about, we're going to be doing a 540-square-foot addition at the rear of the building to satisfy Starbucks's need for the back-of-house function in this space. As well as a kind of attached cooler at the rear. So, as mentioned, we're going to pull off all of kind of that current architecture of the perimeter. We're going to extend the parapet up about five feet and that'll conceal all the rooftop equipment. Reclot the entire facade, the existing, as well as the extended parapet and addition with a brick veneer, which does tie in with the adjacent buildings that have been recently renovated. And this is very much typical for Starbucks's look and feel with the, the primary brick. It's a horizontal stacked brick, you know, about 10 feet below. And up top is going to be a vertical stacked brick for a little more orientation. And then, they do have a vertical wood siding and kind of the feature accent above the entry and the drive-through area. As you can see, it's depicted a little dark here in the rendering. But, you can see samples of those actual materials in the upper-left corner with the brick, which is kind of a taupey color. And then, the wood, which is kind of almost like a mahogany-ish color. And then, we did include a few photos, kind of just the adjacent vernacular style shape. So, there is some brick, a little more red tones in the adjacent buildings, but obviously newer renovations. But then, you see that parapet conceal all your mechanical and rooftop equipment. And then, the images on the, the left side of the current Workers' Credit Union building. I will also be replacing all new storefronts, getting rid of the arch there to make it a little more modern look, but also to improve energy efficiency for the building. Any questions on the, the architecture?
It looks good. Get in?
Easy. I'll pass it over to Travis.
Really, get easy one.
Here's the trouble, yeah.
Is that funny? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Sean Kelly from Chapel Engineering, behalf of the project team, thank you again for having us today. What I'd like to do tonight is take us a minute to walk through our traffic study, how it was conducted, what our findings were, what our recommendations are. And I'd be happy to answer any questions members of the board or audience might have. Some of this may be a bit repetitive, so I'll try to go quickly. But, I think we're all probably familiar with the project site. Again, we're located central to the Twin City Plaza. Today, it holds the Workers' Credit Union, access to the projects provided off Marion Avenue to the west and also from Abbott Avenue to the east. As part of our analysis, we went out and looked at the two locations that are expected to apply the majority of traffic associated with the project. One is the four-way stop patrol intersection of Carriage Court. We're legaling as Twin City Plaza Drive. And then, the other would be the site access from the site onto Twin City Plaza Drive. We went out and did traffic counts. We did counts on a daily basis. We did counts during the weekday morning, which is 7 to 9. The weekday evening, which is 4 to 6. And then, the Saturday midday, 11 to 2. And the reason we drilled down on these time periods is it's the busiest hours of commuter traffic and also the busiest hours of traffic for the project. I think we went through this quite a bit, but again, under existing conditions, we have the bank there today of about 1,800 square feet. Their access is onto Twin City Plaza Drive with a rear access into the parking lot as shown. Based on the counts that we conducted, Carriage Court today carries about 4,800 vehicles a day on a weekday, 4,300 on a Saturday. The peak hour flows range from about 250 vehicles an hour in the morning to about 360 vehicles an hour in the evening. The busiest time is actually the Saturday midday when there were about 380 vehicles due primarily to the increased shopping in the centers. We looked at crash data at the study area intersections according to state guidelines, looked at the last five years of data. There were no reported collisions at any of the study area intersections, either the four-way intersection or the access. That's not to say that there may not have been a minor offender that didn't involve either the police or, or crash record. But, in terms of significant crashes, there was, there was nothing there. We did look at vehicle speeds. We did a speed study on the segment of Carriage Court between the four-way intersection that serves the project and also the four-way intersection that serves Hannaford. And as I was looking into, one of the things that we found was that the speeds out there under current conditions are excessive, particularly in the morning and particularly in the eastbound direction coming from there. We also looked at the bank generation because this site isn't, isn't a blank slate. And the bank today does about 30 trips in the morning, 106 trips in the evening, and then 64 during that, that Saturday midday.
Did you, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, that's without the, the upper store where Kmart used to be is still open, correct? I mean, is that still open?
Kmart?
No.
Bob's is closed.
The only thing that's there now is.
So, is, does that accommodate for a full parking lot? I mean, not just, you know, you know, with, with the stores that aren't there today? Or are you doing the numbers based on what's there today?
That's a good question. When we did our counts, Bob's was still open.
Yeah.
So, their traffic was in the mix. But, the Pizza Room Uno's had actually closed.
Right.
So, what we did is we used industry IT data to generate traffic to show what the Pizza Room Uno's or restaurant of that type would generate if it was operational.
Yeah.
So, even though it wasn't in our, in the counts that we collected, we did put that, those numbers in there to make sure that when we looked at how that four-way intersection worked, those ones were there.
That's good.
So, the proposed condition, I think Brendan did a great job walking through this. But, just to point out again on the access, some of the changes, you know, we're introducing a raised median island on Twin City Plaza to separate those inbound and outbound flows. Today, it's only a center line painted, which is a big change improvement. The site would operate in a one-way counterclockwise manner. And as pointed out, there is a bypass lane, so cars that want to park and walk in can do so without being stuck behind a drive-through traffic. The 28 parking spaces, you know, exceeds what's needed in terms of parking for a restaurant of this size. So, one of the things that we do as part of our studies is we, we perform what we call trip generation calculations. And we rely on data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers or the ITE. And the ITE over decades has collected traffic counts at existing facilities, all types, residential, office, commercial. And for this particular project, we use data for what's known as Lane Use Code 937, coffee donut shop with drive-through window. What it allows us to do is to project the amount of traffic that this project will generate based on operational facilities that are similar. And what it tells us is that the busiest times are your weekday morning and your Saturday midday, which I think everyone would expect. And you see about 100 customers in and about 100 customers out ballpark. Weekday evening, it's a little, about half that, you know, 50 in and 50 out. Now, not all of these trips will be an increase because there is traffic today. Now, not all of these trips will be an increase because there is traffic today at the bank that will be eliminated when the project is built. And as you can see, those numbers range from thirty in the morning to sixty-four on a Saturday to a hundred and six during a weekday evening. So in the evening peak hour, we actually would generate less traffic than the bank does. And then obviously, in the morning and Saturday, the numbers are about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and fifty more trips. Now, not all the trips that a project of this type generates are new. Frankly, most of the traffic is not new. There were two characteristics involved with this site. The first is it's located within a multi-tenant center, so you get what's known as internal trips, people that are already in the plaza. You know, maybe you've just finished your work at a plant at Fitness, you want to get a coffee on the ride home, or you're about to go to Hanaford and do some shopping, and you want to grab a coffee, or you may work at the plaza and want to grab something to eat or drink on the way to your shift. Typically, those internal trips can account for anywhere from twenty to fifty percent of the traffic. To be conservative, we didn't take any reduction for internal trips, so we assume that it's all external. And then beyond that, there's what we call pass-by trips. And these are trips that are already traveling on roadways adjacent to the site that come in and get coffee and then continue on their way. And this really is the largest percentage, and the data shows that during peak hours, as much as ninety percent of coffee trips are pass-by, particularly in the morning. People stop in on their way to work, get their coffee, pull back out, and head where they're going. Again, we tried to take a very conservative approach, so instead of using a ninety percent pass-by, we did a forty percent pass-by with sixty percent being new. And based on those numbers, as you can see, what it comes out to is that during the busiest hours, the morning and the Saturday, we're looking at about a hundred and thirty peak hour trips, so that's about sixty-five in, sixty-five out, or a trip a minute in either direction. And then weekday evenings, about half that, about sixty trips, thirty in, thirty out, so about a trip every other minute in either direction. There's been a lot of discussion about the drive-through queue, storage, and ensuring that it works, and I did see some correspondence, you know, related to some concerns of how the bank used to operate or potentially does operate still today. I will say in full disclosure, I've been a resident of the city for twenty-plus years, and I used to have my mortgage with Workers Credit Union, and that was my branch. So I'm intimately familiar with how it works. And the problem that this branch had and may still have is that although you have the three drive-through lanes there, as you can see, once you make the bend and get into the, what looks like the east-west drive aisle on the plan, it shrinks down to one lane. So there will be situations where either at the ATM window or the teller window typically, that queue would extend beyond four, and then what it basically does is block you from getting into the other lane. So that queue would wrap around the building and come up towards where that blue car is. During those instances, I would typically park and walk in, but some people would stay in that line. But ultimately, what caused a lot of friction and a lot of the queuing issues is the fact that there wasn't a lot of storage for those lanes, and once you get into the one-lane area, the queues will compound. The plan that we're showing over there, as you can see, has queue storage for fifteen vehicles within the marked lane. Studies that have been done show that the eighty-fifth percentile queue for these types of uses is typically eleven to twelve vehicles, and spikes around thirteen. Occasionally, you'll see a few more vehicles, but we can clearly provide, you know, fifteen vehicles in the lane, and then even really another four vehicles internal to the site, almost a twenty before you had even spill out into the, into Twin City Plaza Drive. So, you know, we're confident this drive-through lane is the size appropriately to accommodate the project. And again, just to reiterate, anyone that doesn't want to stay in the drive-through lane or wants to bypass it, there is a full twelve-foot lane that circles the site that lets you get to the parking field or the exit of the north. Our recommendations, you know, in terms of impacts to traffic operations itself, there really isn't a notable impact. We give level service designation grades, similar to what you get in school, and everything else here is either level service A or level service B, so there's no capacity issues per se. But there are a couple of safety issues that we'd like to address, and one of them is on the top left is, if you look in the corner where the site is, there's some overgrown vegetation. It impairs your sight lines. If you're driving towards Uno's, towards that stop sign, and looking left towards the Hanaford, towards the Japanese restaurant there, those bushes can block your sights. We're recommending that they get either, you know, cut back or replaced with something that has a lower profile. And then I think that the more important recommendation is when we looked at those vehicle speeds, again, along Carriage Court, what we found is that even though it's a fifteen mile an hour road, that segment between the two four-way stops is typically averaging about twenty-two miles an hour and has an eighty-fifth percentile of thirty miles an hour. It's very difficult to get to thirty miles an hour if you come to a complete stop at either of these intersections, given the short distance between them.
If they stop, they won't stop.
So what's happening is they don't stop. As a twenty years, I assure you, I'd probably go through it once or twice myself. But if you go through in the morning when there's not a lot of activity, people come in from Arium and they drive towards that, they see nothing coming from the bank, nothing from Uno's, it's wide open, and they just drive right through it. Today, maybe it's not as big of an issue because there's no conflicts, but certainly when Starbucks is there, we don't want that to keep happening. So we're recommending that flashing stop signs be installed on all four approaches. There's something similar to that over, if you get off of Abbott Avenue at Route Two, if you see those. And it reinforces the need to stop, it brings drivers into compliance, so we think it's an important measure, and it's something that should be done in conjunction with the project.
That's a public road? You don't have control over that road? Is that as a request we put into the traffic?
I believe it's, it may be a private way.
I think it's private. I thought they would belong to the developer.
I believe it's a private way.
You know, so you can do that if you're...
Yeah, that is a private way.
So, you know, in conclusion, the project is, even with the conservative approach we took regarding pass-by and internal trips, generates about one to two new trips per minute during the busiest hours. Most of this traffic is already out there, either in the plaza or driving by. No notable impact to operations. Parking supply is adequate, the drive-through lane is adequate. And again, our recommendations are really focused on just making sure that four-way intersection is safe by improving the sight lines and putting in those stop signs to further enforce the need for all four approaches to stop.
I think that's the key to this.
That's really all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
No, I think you're putting the stop sign, I agree with you. That stop sign is like going eighty-five percent of the...
I was amazed how many people just drove through and stopped.
Years ago, when that mall was full of stores, people drove slower.
Yeah, but it's empty. Right.
You'd be able to go from one corner to the other without a, a kind of a, too. There are no curves anywhere or islands.
As this mall pulls back up.
Any consideration on the numbers when a store fills the Kmart section?
We didn't. I mean, typically, if something's been vacant more than three years, we typically don't backfill it because ultimately, the way the state looks at things after three years, they've lost their, their meter rates, if you will. So if they had to go and do something, they'd have to go to the state for all middle tools. So if it was, if it was filled within three years, we would have, but I believe that's what they've been for at least a decade now, maybe even more.
Yeah, I think Pittsburgh mostly gets filled one of these days, but...
Yes.
Oh, yeah. There is, there is a lot of space.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on?
Would you want to read the department head's comments?
Yeah, sure.
The assessor approved. The plan appears to meet the requirements from an assessing standpoint. The board of health said a grease trap is required interior and exterior. A dumpster area must be on a concrete padlet fence enclosure. I think that was addressed. Provide detailed kitchen plans to...
Board of Health.
Board of Health. Fire Department says preliminary questions for previous seminal were satisfied. The D P W director of groups, it says a water clearance plan will be required due to the building changes and change of use. Building inspector approved with no comment. The conservation said the stormwater plan appears thorough and compliant with stormwater standards. Native plants are preferred in landscaped areas. The police department says they approve. Police have a plan to address any excess queuing at the extended Twin City Plaza Drive or Carriage Court. The bank has occasional overflow and have traffic control people to manage the queue. If an alarm system is installed, contact information for the owner and manager should be kept informed by the police department about the end of the day. And then I think most of my comments were already addressed. There was a waiver requested from section twenty-two, there are sixty-two point three point one regarding the landscape architect.
But they're going to submit the architectural plan, not, not the architectural plan, they're going to submit on the plan the proposed vegetation.
But it's not a registered landscaped architect.
Right, right. It's...
Yeah, there is landscape.
So they need a waiver from that provision?
Yeah.
That was it.
Okay. Now, that's against, in case anyone in the audience wants to speak on it, fair?
I'll move to close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing.
All entries.
All say a, say aye?
Aye.
All say no?
Thank you.
Okay, regular meeting.
They'll be coming up in the regular meeting now.
They'll come up in a few minutes.
They'll come up in a few minutes.
Yeah, we don't waste time.
Hearing's...
Thank you.
So now we're going to go to the regular meeting.
A regular meeting. Call to all, please.
We won't go anywhere.
Patrick Perloff.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi.
Here.
Carvatore Yuso.
Here.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Hare.
Here.
Dean Bayor.
Here.
John Susa.
Yeah. Minutes of previous meetings.
That's correct. Hearing, not time.
Motion to accept a minute.
I have a motion made.
Six years I haven't saw him.
And I have a second to accept a minute. Motion made and seconded. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're not a vote for all, favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Note the cell, stop body.
No, he was. Well, that was the library, no back.
Plan submitted.
Joy, you took two parking spots.
Yeah, I know. In six ninety-nine and seven eleven Willard Street, map three ninety-eight lots, twenty-seven eight, twenty-eight eight, and twenty-eight B.
I can't really read them. You need one more?
Uh...
Carry it.
We're good. Thank you, Bill.
Reference. Good evening. Good evening, Anthony Cleave, someone from Haley Ward here on behalf of Brenna Industries. So just for reference, I passed around a G I S of the area. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Castleland subdivision at the end of Willard Street. So this is property that nestles between the two access points to the Castleland subdivision on the west side of Willard Street. So there's actually three parcels there today, two lots, and then a thirty-foot parcel. So what we're basically doing is just reorganizing that, combining the three, and coming back with two. So both, it's all in residence, Residence A, has a required frontage, lot area, and lot width.
Motion to recommend...
Got the second.
Sal will walk. That's easy.
Easy, easy.
It's too easy.
It's an easy change.
That's a motion to a doors. Motion to a doors, that's right, man. Same thing.
Second, second.
A motion made and motion myself. Seconded. All the favorites, say aye?
Aye.
All say no?
Thank you very much for your time. Good day.
Give it easy. Old business, now a new business. City council petition, five point two five, dimensional regulations in R B R C District. Planning board to make recommendations to the city.
I think it's...
This has been continued to November, October.
October twenty-first at six thirty-five.
Okay, it's been contained to October twenty-first, six thirty-five. Any additions, deletions, corrections? You're not a vote for all, all favor say aye? All say no? Motion carries. City council petition, seven point two five, the upper-story building units, planning board to make recommendations to city council.
I make a recommend, I make a motion to recommend approval to the city council.
Have a motion made by Carol, seconded by Paul. Okay, to recommend approval to the city council. Any discussion? You're not a call for the vote, all favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Motion carries. Site plan application, the five oh eight Main Street, map two three two, parcel nine, commercial office building.
That's continued. Yeah, we've continued.
That's continued. Evidence for conservation, right?
Starting.
November fourth. Okay. Well, this has been continued until November fourth. Special permit. Flood plane application for five oh eight Main Street, map two thirty-two, parcel nine, commercial office building. It's also continued until November fourth. Site plan application, eight eight one, memory map view, map two six one, parcel one, restaurant with drive-through.
Do they need a waiver?
They need a landscape.
They have a waiver on the...
So the first thing I'll do is make a motion to approve the requested waiver.
Second.
Landscaped architect. Request a waiver on the landscape, any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Waiver accepted.
I make a motion to approve the site plan with the condition of compliance with department head comments.
Sir.
Second back off?
Motion made and seconded. The second, the condition of compliance with department head comments.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
And then the boilerplate one that we do with the planning bill on your show.
Yes.
And...
Yep.
And, okay, and the boilerplate. Any further discussion? You're not a call for the vote. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no? All say carries. Congratulations.
Yeah, good job. Very good job.
Yeah, that'd be nice, yeah. Good spot for it.
I'll be in for my coffee.
Yeah, graphic.
Yeah, two fifty. Oh, no, not two fifty anymore. Only five. See how often I get coffee.
He's a tea drinker.
Okay, the federal subdivision modification received on seven thirty-one twenty-four for some of the states, the map four two three, parcel three, parcel eleven, thirty-three, that's thirty-three. The planning board original request was to make determination if deemed a minor modification and then vote accordingly. The plan, the board voted to continue this communication on eight nineteen twenty-four and nine sixteen twenty-four. Illegal opinion was received on nine thirteen twenty-four. The board to discuss next step to vote on application for modification and applicable. We've had a lot of discussions on this, and this subdivision has been, by a number of our previous planning directors, has deemed to be the subdivision. Time has expired, okay? That has been questioned by the developer, and they wish to make a presentation this evening. I would recommend it at this time.
Just can we know for the record that there was a letter received today by the attorney for the developer?
Right.
And he sent it out at about three o'clock. I don't know how many of you got your email, but I also printed it for you. It's in front of you. For your view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I read that, so...
How is everybody?
Great.
Okay.
You can pull a tariff, there's one. You can pull a tear, there's one.
I actually.
For the record, your name.
I'm sorry, John Dombrowski, on behalf of the petitioner. I. It's twenty-plus years of history here. I actually, it took a long time to put this letter together. I did want a second set of eyes on it because of the complex nature of it. So I had another lawyer look at it. So I have that to pass out as well. And I understand it's a lot, the board needs, you know, time to digest, I get that as well. So, I note with some chagrin that Dombrowski's handbook is in the card, so this letter is from his office. But I'll just give the board a quick summary of the history. And I don't think the city attorney was fully aware of the history and the circumstances, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy, on the facts, but the, some of the states submitted a subdivision for approval, and this is all up on the Leggett Hill area. I think the first one was for twenty-three lots. That was in two thousand and two, roughly. I believe in two thousand and four, Crown Point, which is a much larger subdivision, two hundred twenty-nine units, was approved. And, and I think the planning board was wise in doing this, is they put together a phasing plan. And they included not only some of the states in this decision, but also Crown Point and two other smaller options of off of Crown Point. And they said, look, you can only build thirty houses a year. Around the same time, then in two thousand and six, the decision was modified relative just to access road. I don't, I don't think that's really important for our discussions here, except that the modification just sort of adds more time onto the timetable. Around two thousand and six, another development was approved, and it was an industrial park. This is where the registered motor vehicles is now. And when that subdivision was initially approved, one of the conditions was to run the sewer main down Central Street. And that would give access not only to Mr. Exeris, but to all the abutters that were on Central Street. And then after the subdivision plan was approved, there was discussions apparently with the DPW who, and the developer, who said, well, probably makes more sense so we can use the gravity to run this cross-country instead of down Central Street. So they ran it cross-country. I, I don't really understand that because Mr. Exeris was required and did put three hundred thousand dollars into the Jitec pump station to upgrade that pump station. But they ran it cross-country. Mr. Exeris and one or two of the abutters appealed that decision, saying, you know, you're, you're taking away my sewer access now. So he appealed the decision, he sued the city planning board, and he sued the developer. I don't know if Sterling Planning Board was involved or not, but, but there was a lawsuit. And as a result of that lawsuit, there was a settlement agreement. And the developer of the industrial park agreed that he would run the sewer down Central Street as initially proposed. That never happened. Mr. Exeris had to bring a lawsuit against that developer for breaching the settlement agreement. There was a judgment entered, I believe in two thousand and seventeen, confirming that developer's responsibility to install the sewer main down Central Street. There have been several contems, I think that there's two contempt judgments out there now. But, you know, as we sit here today, and I think that's where the equitable estoppelment comes into play, but as we sit here today, this particular developer already put in the infrastructure for the twenty-three lots. Not the, not the road yet, but all the pipings in, it's stubbed off to each lot. Most of the trees were cleared. He paid three hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the Jitec pump station. And to now say that those approvals have lapsed, we find that inherently unfair. But all that's contained in my letter, I think it's echoed in the other attorney's letter. So, the board has any questions? Any factual questions, I think Mr. Exeris is here.
Okay. We have the county council here, too.
Yeah. We have Amy here.
Well, so my, my question is.
Carol.
We got all caught up in this, I can't remember the reason you originally add, what, how it came up. Were you, were you looking for, is there a modification to the subdivision?
I would defer that to Mr. Exeris, I'm not sure.
It's, there's, it's in your packet, I, I put it back in there.
There's one.
It's in the packet, dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. I gave you a cover letter with a summary of items for your review. And Mr. Exeris's request for modification of a subdivision is in there, along with his plan, I copied it, and the Department had comments.
I have never requested a modification or something.
I have a letter.
Yes.
Some of the states, subdivision.
We had a site plan, we visited the site in two thousand and nineteen at your request, and we all went up to the site. And you asked me to modify the drainage system to include storm scepters, and we agreed to do that. The only modification that we're making is we're adding storm scepters to the drainage at your request. I'm not modifying. That's not, that's not, that's not modifying the site plan. I'm adding storm scepters at your request, that's all I'm doing. And you asked me that in two thousand and nineteen.
Right.
At the site visit, and we agreed.
Yes.
So I don't know why we're here, honestly, I just don't.
Well, I, I'm trying to remember how this, how, all I recall is that the building inspector said that the plan had lapsed, for lack of a better term, but what?
And then subsequently, I met with the building inspector, showed him the paperwork, and he rescinded that, and said, no, no, I agree with you, the permit is, I will issue the permit. He sent the second letter, saying that my first letter isn't accurate.
That's right.
That, that's what he did.
The building commissioner did pick that up.
That's what he did. So I don't know.
Did we get that letter?
It's, it's in a Department Head approval form.
You sent me a copy of it.
I think there's a copy of it in your packet, signed up here now.
But we're just finding that out now, right?
It's in your packet, yeah.
I'm not asking anything. I'm just asking to comply with what you requested. Right, no, I remember that. You remember that.
It's on Summit?
Yes.
Okay.
Separate from Crown Point.
You had separate Summit from Crown Point.
I haven't done anything on Crown Point, I didn't ask a question about Crown Point, I didn't bring up.
No, I agree, I agree.
I'd only asked about.
But I, like I said, the thing from the, and I, I don't see it, I can't find it, I don't have a letter from.
I'm only here on, on some of the states, John, I'm the only saying to you, you were here in two thousand and nineteen, you asked me to do something, I agreed to do it. I've gone as far as I can go, I put in the sewer, all the sewers in, all the waters in, all the drains in, the hydrants are in, all twenty-three lots are stubbed, all twenty-three lots are empty, sewer permits. I can't connect until the developer brings the sewer down the street. And this is a court case that I brought to court on, and I'll give you a copy of it.
Okay.
Where he's been held in contempt of court. He even dissolved the company and changed the company name to try and get out of doing it. And the judge said, no, you can't do that. I'm waiting on him.
Yeah. See, we don't have, we don't have any of that documented.
I'll give you a copy.
No, no, that's all right, yeah. See, we're, we're in one corner over here. We get some information, we're not getting.
And that's why we're here, is to explain our position.
Okay.
And, and that's all we can do, and I'll give you, you can have a module. That's the decision from the board, saying the other developer is required to install.
The same thing, just modify the property.
Yes, yeah, he's required to install the sewer per the court order. He's violated all the court orders, and they're holding him in contempt. He even dissolved the company and tried to change the company name, and the judge said, that's not a good look, you can't do that. The new company cannot install the sewer.
Yeah.
So he's in, and he's paying my lawyer, he's paying my legal fees, he's paying everything. That's a good day. So, I'm just, my hands are kind of tied at this point. I've gone as far as I can go. I mean, you were requesting lots, releases, you were requesting anything. I've not requested anything. No change to the actual site plan, except that and the drains. Exactly. I'm just adding storms.
Well, I know you added the storm scepters, yeah?
Yes.
I know, we have.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good. And I, I agreed to do that, John, I attended, I figured, I knew that.
See, our problem is that we've run into a situation where, you know, the state laws of the state, you know, they all say two years, we extend it to three years. And there is a, a time limit to do a subdivision.
It's on sub-.
Okay.
And everything, I agree.
And then it got, and then it got extended in two thousand and eight by the state because of the housing prices, okay, don't have a problem. Got extended again in two thousand and ten, I don't have a problem with that. When we get to twenty-four years, or twenty, twenty years plus, you know, we have, there are questions. And, and then there was things that we'd, we'd accepted the storm scepters, then the building inspector came in and said, he wouldn't give any building permits.
And, and then he later recanted that, and said, I was wrong, I do agree that you're right.
Okay, I don't know whether he recant that.
It's in the package.
I missed that.
That was.
I was.
We received it in August?
Yes.
Oh, I guess, okay.
So can we hear it for a moment?
Yeah, can we?
So we got, in the meantime, we got legal opinions.
Yeah.
Are you still waiting on the sewer?
Yes.
This day. So we're not holding you up?
No, no.
No.
Okay, we're just trying to figure out, Amy, would you have any comments?
Sure, so.
For the record?
Yeah, Amy, question, town council, city solicitor. So, there, I guess, changing the, first of all, just the easy, I'll get rid of the easy stuff first. Changing the drainage to add storm scepters is, is an amendment, it is a modification of the plan. Extremely minor, but it is considered a modification to the plan. So it should be acted upon, so we don't have to look back in twenty years and not know why storm scepters are going to be put in. So, that, that actually should be acted upon, I do think that is an amendment to, to the subdivision. Because, as you know, for a subdivision, you're looking at infrastructure, and drainage is infrastructure. I, I received an October seventh letter from Attorney Dombrowski at about three o'clock today. There is new information in this letter with regard to a lawsuit with regard to the sewer and the location. I, I was aware of, I was aware of the developer's contempt lawsuit, that was already, that was already brought to my attention, I did address that in my memo, I do not think that that does, I do not think that that toll, that litigation tolled the action. However, there was prior litigation that involved, it was, I think it was, it was in June fourteen, it was number eleven on the, on the October seventh letter, page two, number eleven, honor about June fourteenth, two thousand and six. And that went apparently for four years until two thousand and ten. I will say that the June fourteenth, two thousand and six to June fourteenth, two thousand and ten, it's a little unusual that the dates match up perfectly.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, as long as you check it in.
Yeah, I do.
So, so that's, you know, that's, that's four years that I didn't have in my calculation, this is brand new to me, that information. That lawsuit would, in my opinion, toll the time to act and the eight years, because that does involve the planning board. So if the litigation doesn't involve the planning board, I think it does toll the time to act. That being said, I, I don't have all of the information to do, to do the exact math as to whether the eight years did toll or not. And it appears that the building commissioner believes that it did, because he did revoke his original comment that the eight years has, has lapsed. I'm assuming, and again, I don't have the plans, I don't have the, you know, subdivision plans, but I'm assuming that the subdivisions cannot be constructed unless the eight years, the zoning freeze has tolled. So I'm assuming zoning has changed, and some, for some reason, this subdivision cannot be create, cannot be built unless that eight years has tolled.
Yeah, what, what has happened is, in, in the meantime, our subdivision regulations changed.
Okay.
So the lots were originally twenty thousand square foot, and we're now currently at twenty-one eight.
Okay.
So there's a change there.
Yeah.
In the lot size. And that's what the building inspector had originally voiced his opinion on, was the change in the lot size, and because of the eight years, it, it had expired.
Right.
And he's recanted, you know?
Right.
That's.
Yeah, so, so that, and then, you know, we need the date that the plan was endorsed, that kicks off, that, that starts the eight-year tolling. So, we, we need, we would need that, and, and then we would need to figure out this litigation and how that plays into it. So, with, with, and that's with regard to the eight years. With regard to the time to act on the subdivision, that is in your regulation. I do not, I do not agree at all with Attorney Haberty. First of all, Attorney Haberty's letter states that he reviewed correspondence from October fourth. So that, again, that's another letter I don't have. So, so, you know, the information is coming into me in drips and drabs. So I'm not sure when Attorney Haberty says that he reviewed correspondence from Attorney Dombrowski dated October fourth, I don't have that letter.
I think the October seventh.
I think that was the first draft.
Okay. And so, but, but I, I do not agree that, you know, his, his conclusion that to section fourteen of your planning board subdivision rules and regulations state that, you know, the failure to complete all improvements within the time allotted may cause the planning board, but he says that, I'm sorry, where it's connected to, where your, the expiration is connected to the execution of a longer other surety. And I, I did address this in my memo, it's just not logical that you can, that you attach a expiration date to an action by the developer, because they're more, that means the developer can just hold off on doing that for, you know, fifty years. And, but, but that, that again, we have to, we have, kind of have to separate the action of the developer to complete the infrastructure, which is in section fourteen of your rules and regulations, as opposed to the eight-year tolling of zoning. And from, the other thing that I've just learned today, somewhat in this letter, but more tonight by the developer, is that infrastructure has been constructed, or has been, you know, put in the ground. I don't, it doesn't sound like the roads in, but there is some infrastructure that has already been completed.
That is correct.
So, again, that also does affect, that does affect any, if the board wanted to rescind a subdivision, that, in my opinion, knowing that, that I just learned tonight, would make that harder for a board to rescind a subdivision, because infrastructure has been installed.
So, bottom line.
The bottom line is, you know, how do we? Well, how do we get this moving?
It's still active.
Well, it's stuck on the sewer, isn't it?
It was.
It's gotta do something, because the eight years is gonna run out.
There, there is a court date with the other developer, the next month, on the contempt order to force it to begin, but here's where the problem arises. November fifteenth, you can't go in the street, stay long.
Right.
And now we're approaching November, and what's gonna happen is, when you get to the decision, it's gonna say, hey, I can't go till the spring, because I can't go in a row.
So, if we were to act on the minor modification, does that extend the delay?
No, that, that would not, I, I mean, it could, you know, it could extend the work, the storm scepter work, but, but no, I, I don't think you can't, you can't come in for a minor modification and expect the entire subdivision to be. But, but again, my, what would really needs to be looked at is these eight years, because if, once the eight years tolls, then the building commissioner would be forced to go back to his original opinion, which is that the zoning, he now has to comply with today's settlement.
Do, do we know how much of the eight years, we don't know how much of the eight years is left.
Right, because I, I have to go back and go through. Right, because I, I have, I have to go back and go through.
Do you guys know, in your opinion, do you know what's left on, on the, the extensions?
So the hard, the hardest part on that is that there's the permit extension act of 2008, which was extended again in 2000, well, no, I'm sorry, 2010, then 2008, I mean, 2010, then 2012, that extended it for four years. If it was then, then he had this litigation, um, which, which would have told it, so that would have stopped the time period and then he would get COVID tolling.
Right.
Um, and then, so that, that's what we have to calculate and then go back and calculate.
So we also believe it starts in '07 when you revised the conditions and modified the approval.
So we gave earlier.
In 2007, as we already added condition number 16 for an acceptance of road access A.
Which was the road.
Which is a, a road that the city took by eminent domain.
That's right, to the.
And there's an issue with that access road and this date is still not resolved.
So it sounds like we're not resolving this.
That's still not resolved.
It's not that it's more legal than it is. I don't know, it's right.
I've never known anything about an access road. I'm trying to get new information.
I didn't know it.
I just keep finding out new information.
It's only because we were here and we know.
So perhaps you should.
We're trying to get all the information, you know?
It really would be great if, if we could get a full, complete submittal.
Yep, uh, you guys are going to.
We can do that.
Provide each other with the info. The, uh, the question I would have also is if that did expire, does he still have a right to ask for another extension or?
Well, they always can.
You have to ask.
You have to ask that before it expires.
Before the expiration.
Or the board can waive that, though.
But we can waive that. So even if so, our recourse, if the time has expired, after we know all the information, we could, we could act that way as well.
No, the board can waive the.
That's what I just said.
They can waive the.
No, we can waive the process, but not the request.
Correct.
Because the process says.
You have to reset.
To, to expire, you have to notify all the abutters and all the letters and all the rest. We can waive that process.
Process.
Okay, so that's not a problem.
And we could add.
The process might be waived.
Extension if requested, that's what I'm asking.
But you cannot waive, you cannot extend the eight years.
No, correct, correct, understood. I'm saying if everything's expired right now, I'm looking worst case, right? Everything's expired, but he's got the infrastructure for those homes. Uh, there's some agreement on the pump station, there's some agreement with road access A, whatever that is. Worst case, if everything did expire, we could waive that process and then we could act on.
Well, no, you can't, if it wants to expire is.
Yeah, just submit a new application.
That'd be a new application.
No, we could waive that process. We just said that, right?
No, we can waive the process.
The process, but the process.
The only, uh, the process is request an extension. Okay, and to an extent, to request an extension, you have to notify all the abutters. Okay, we can, we can waive that by.
Waive that process.
But you can't, and you, the eight, eight, eight years, but we don't know when it expires. That's my problem.
That can't be extended.
If it did expire.
That can't be extended.
The eight years cannot be extended.
That's the legal, that's the legal question, right? When does it expire? And that's between, so.
So we need the two attorneys to decide.
The two attorneys need to get together. I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
We're fairly confident that the litigation tolls it. Because the underlying party is the city of Lummister.
Right.
We sued the city of Lummister for taking the sewer line off of Central Street and relocating onto private property. And you had a good reason to do that. It was to eliminate a pump station.
Right.
Which is maintenance and money. My argument was that should have gone back before the public. And you chose not to do that, so you didn't have a public hearing, you did it privately. So that's why I brought the action to the planning board. The settlement of that lawsuit against the planning board was the agreement by Whitney to put the sewer line in. Now, Coleman Page represented the city in that argument. You were there, you were a party of interest and you had legal representation. So when you settled the case and Whitney agreed to put the sewer line in, we believe that's the link between the city and us that allows this litigation to toll the eight-year statute. Now, she disagrees and I respect that, I respect that. But we have Mark Dombrowski, who's a zoning guru, who says, Jimmy, no, she's wrong, you're right. So we have two lawyers that are both very, very smart. And one of them, they should talk and come up with a solution.
Well, it's not Mark Dombrowski, it's Paul Harvey.
Paul Harvey works with Mark Dombrowski, they both review it, I've spoken to both of them. I have a conversation with both of them. So that's, that, that's a matter, that's just a matter of the offices, Haverty and Dombrowski. So that's what they say now.
So you need the information.
So there's nothing for us to do tonight?
No.
Yeah, for example, I, I was not aware that the, I was not aware that the contempt is related to the underlying planning board appeal.
So we'll get the two attorneys together.
But I still don't, I don't know if that would change my mind because that is, that is, I, I have to.
And so you don't need a motion here because you'll keep it on communication.
Uh, the motion would be just to continue the information and.
Continue until the two attorneys can work out an agreement.
But that's just communication, all right?
Yeah, communication, right.
Yeah, that makes it just, just let us know when you're ready.
We're trying.
You don't need a vote.
We'd like, I'd like to see it built.
Well, I know, I have to say, in, in practical terms, we.
Okay.
We want this, I, I can't speak for the board, but I, in my, in practical terms, I'd like to see this completed. Since we, we're trying to put apartments on top of buildings right now, it'd be nice to have the development.
We need housing, that's the largest single-family subdivision in the history of Lummister. We'd love to get it built.
But at the same time.
It's got to be done right.
At, but at the same time, we don't want other people whose subdivisions in the future or ones that are already pending come in and say, you did it for Mr. Exares.
I couldn't agree more. I don't think anybody's got anything wrong, I'm not suggesting that at all.
No, I don't, I don't think so either.
I'm just saying, to explain to you, my hands are tied and at some point, I may have to go to court and say to the judge, I'm going to put the sewer line in myself and I'm going to sue him for the money and I can give permission to do so. And the problem is, you can only get one sewer extension from it. You can't run two sewer lines on the same street.
Right.
And he owns the permit.
Right.
Because in the agreement, he took possession of the permit. So I can't run that sewer without someone's approval because the DPW issued J. Whitney Development the permit.
Okay.
And you're never, you're not going to see a city street with two sewer lines.
You're not going to, you've got two more.
Oh, you have two more?
You do.
On this, today?
Tonight.
Crown Point.
Crown Point, and then some of you.
Yeah, can we move, because we have a vote.
Crown Point is being the same idea. I would ask that it be continued until the attorneys can speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, that one, we just, can we move, I think you have two more, you're requesting extensions on.
Yeah.
He's, he's requesting extension on Mary Avenue.
Yes. So Mary Avenue, all the infrastructure is done and I just want to extend it because we don't have time to give you the drawings showing the area.
Okay, listen, 6.1 was for, we just discussed, okay? That's some, 6.2 is Crown Point. So on both of those, we'll take and continue for, on a month or?
But we're not. Just whenever they're ready, we'll put it on the agenda.
You need a written waiver from two, three sections, which they're listed in my email and they're also listed in Mr. Exares's letter, um, that were printed and put in front of you today.
Yeah, quick, John's getting to that.
Okay.
Okay, the, that's, that's not Crown Point.
No, that's Mary Avenue.
That's Mary Avenue.
We haven't got to Mary Avenue yet. Okay, now we're going to Mary Avenue. So, Mary Avenue, definitive subdivision, planning director, provide update to board, plan with discussion on next step. You're looking for an extension on that?
Yes.
There is a, as I explained just briefly, that extension requires a notification to all abutters.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll waive that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to waive the subdivision regulations to notify all.
So I have a, I have a question, John, if I could. On the infrastructure, do you include that paving is infrastructure and what level of paving?
Yeah, we do it two ways, okay? Typically, what we, we do is you come in and do your, your, your subco.
By binding it down right now is.
Get that on the sub, to move on. Now, we have a covenant, do we, we do have a covenant?
Yes.
Okay, we have a covenant, so then, when you request release from the covenant, okay, to sell the property.
Yeah.
At that point, we'll have an engineer look at the property, okay, and come up with a itemized list of what has to be done and the dollar value to that. From that dollar value, a bond will then be required.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, when the bond is required and then we'll take and release, okay, we'll hold the bond. Once we receive the bond, then we give a release on the covenants.
So this is a point of interest, I'll only request the extension. I'm letting you know that all the infrastructure is done and the bind is down, so I'd like to post the bond.
Okay.
So you had done an engineer's estimate a year ago.
We did too, but it was two years ago.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
So we, I'd like, my problem is with, with inflation, I'd like to have him, somebody look at it.
And you've done more work since then, so the amount would be enough.
So underground electric is completed, it's done, everything's done. Transformers are in, the services are all done, everything is done.
Yeah.
So you, if you, if you're concerned about inflation, you want to have an engineer go back out and do it, that's fine, but it hasn't changed that much.
I don't know, but the, what did it come up with the dollar value?
Well, the dollar amount that we came up with before, we added 20% and it was $201,000 and.
Okay.
You added 20% for inflation, Elizabeth?
That was in 2022, we did this.
So what I'm saying.
This was in June of 2022, so it's been over two years.
So what I'm suggesting to you is that is still accurate, excepting for the fact that now the utilities are completed. So if you reduce the utilities off of the estimate, I would post bond for whatever the balance is.
Okay.
And we could move on and get it done and get those three houses built.
Yeah, we can do that. So, so if you have, get together the DPW.
Yes.
Get them to look at the list.
Yeah.
And anything that they mark off as being complete, nah, but I'm not technical, so I don't do it, okay? When they mark off as complete, we subtract that from the bond.
Perfect.
Okay?
So you want to subtract that off the 2022 dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But you're going to apply for the extension.
More than cover.
So you're going to apply for the extension.
So did we do, did we just do that or?
No, there has to be.
We, we discussed it, we discussed a waiver, um, but there's two other waivers that are required and you requested those, so they're in the memo. Um, so it's 14G1 pertaining to the requirements of completion in two years and section 14H7 pertaining to the requirement of completion in three years. Because that, the three-year expiration's already passed, um, so we're waiving that he has to ask for, for the expiration of the waiver.
Okay, so we're going to do that formally.
I can have one.
I ran it by Attorney Questle already and she agreed that these were the three waivers that we needed.
Okay.
So we can prepare those tomorrow at 10:00.
Okay.
And then we'll be good to go.
And then we'll hold on our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
That's good.
But the, doesn't the board need to vote on a?
Yeah, we have to vote on that, I'm sorry. Yeah.
You're not flying bad.
I'm not going back because I live in Tampa and we're about to get hit by.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, I'm just telling the wrong.
Oh, my God.
I'm a North one. Okay, so our first motion would be, uh, to waiver.
14G1, 14H7, and 14G1.
I make a motion to take them and block them, please.
Yeah, take a.
Second, yeah.
Motion made in second to take them and block to waiver, um, 14.
Second by that.
Okay. You've got the numbers there. Uh, any discussion, any further discussion?
Nope.
Ball for the vote, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, request for the waivers. Sorry.
I have a motion made in second to accept the request for the waiver. Any further discussion? You're not above the vote, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, motion carries.
Good to go. Thank you for your time.
So the extension is for how long?
I only need one year. From, from now, from today, one year.
Oh, you're going to put it in writing though?
Yeah.
You'll have time limits on the, on completion.
No, I didn't.
Completion in three years.
No, 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 that was the original, that's, that's what this regulation states.
Yeah, that's what the regulations.
An extension has to be first and not last.
I'll, I'll put that in the request.
Put it in the request, so she's got to vote.
Yeah.
Great.
So we have a lead, so we have a lead. I'm going to have them put that in the application.
Um, we already, you already requested the extension, so I'm just going to write a response saying that you have an extension. So I don't need, I don't, I don't need anything.
Oh, he already gave you this, okay, yeah.
I already have what I need here.
So is, is the time?
The time will be October 7th, 2025.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, have a great night.
And then I've got to go to the DPW and get them to do an inspection.
Wait, are we done, are we talking about Meadowlands or?
Okay.
You want me to call?
We got to go to Meadowlands.
I mean, we can both call, uh, if you feel better doing it in Cherry Hill or something.
Yeah. You're all set.
So we just want to, we just want to make sure we know.
She's got a two-hour drive.
You too.
Yeah, okay.
There was so much that.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
You didn't have a lot of stuff.
I know.
Did we let him go through some?
No.
Neither did we.
Something new all the time.
I don't think so.
Valora Lanza, Warner Street is Linda Facility.
Oh, oh, okay.
No, I think we're all set.
I'm exhausted. Can I ask a real quick question?
Okay, uh, 6.4.
I got a real quick question. I'm, uh, Roy Kales, 236 Leggitt Road, I'm with D Summit and the Crown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you're talking about sewer, sewer lines.
Yes.
Is that including water?
Yes.
It does, so that would be bringing water and sewer.
Oh, to the neighbor, to the.
Yes.
Yes, to the neighborhood, yes.
Yes. Okay, because I, because the.
That's in the original.
In the original plans from 20-plus years ago.
Yes.
It was showing that water and sewer tie-ins were going to be done off of Leggitt Hill Road.
That's right.
Not off of Central Street.
That's right.
Right.
That's why they were talking about that.
The only thing that's changed is the sewer line.
So water will be coming up Leggitt Hill Road?
As far as I know. Comes from the water tower.
I haven't seen anything about that, and every time I've asked, are there any plans that are available for review? No plans are available.
I, I.
I know, we don't have the files on them, they didn't survive.
Those files, I hate to say it, back some time ago.
A former contractor got rid of them when she quit.
Yes.
I feel your.
And I didn't inherit them, so I don't have anything.
Some of our old plans are just thrown away.
Yes, because the, I don't know if anybody has been up in that.
We can get those.
We're gonna have to get them.
Sewer.
Okay, sewer, so water, okay.
Did you call the DPW and ask them?
No, it's.
No, 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 we'll get that. Mr. Xer, I'm sure he, he has the plan for that, and I'm sure with a request we can get it.
Okay, all right. And as far as Crown goes, nothing has been.
No.
Nothing.
Yeah, Crown is.
Nope.
Crown was not part of it. Absolutely, that's a huge bill.
Yeah.
Yes, Summit is relatively small.
Yep.
Can we, um, can we go on to 24?
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sorry.
Sorry, you said.
We're giving all this to bonus.
Who's that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you sending that memo from?
Okay, where am I? At 6.4, request for bond amount. The Meadowlands at Willow Street, the Fennel subdivision map, 398, 3B lot 1, map 398-3 lot 2, map 398-3 lot 3, map 398-3 lot 18, map 398 lot 19, map 398 lot 9, lot 20, map 398-3, lot 21, map 39-3, lot 22, map 39-3, lot 26, map 39-3, lot 27. Okay? So this one, they're looking for release of the covenant on these lots, okay? A bond, there's still 17 lots they were holding, so a bond's not required at this time.
No.
Okay? So, so we can vote to release the covenant on these lots.
The lots have enough value to cover remaining?
Well, there's 17 lots left.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's more than enough to cover, and the infrastructure is done, okay? Now, they, we came up, we did get a, a bond of 1.4 million.
Yeah.
Before the board does anything on this one, though, this one has expired, it needs to be extended.
Oh, okay.
So there's, we, as we were looking at the other subdivisions, we realized that this one is also expired. So the board needs to take the same motions you just took on Mary Avenue. With the three waiver requests, those need to be granted, and then an extension needs to be granted.
Okay.
And she's asking for two-year extension for this.
Okay, is that on hand?
That's on the, the email dated October 7th. It wasn't in your package, it just came in from you today.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay. That one.
A lot of time I'm asked to.
The pile getting smaller. All right, I make, I make a motion to take them and block.
Second.
There you go.
Seconded by that.
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion here to accept the three-year extension.
They're asking for a two-year extension.
But that's a one-year extension, right?
They're asking for a two-year.
And I make, and my motion is to take them and block, so we don't have to do all three of them simultaneously.
Yeah, all three wave.
Well, there's two things. First, I have to waiver.
And the letter.
Okay, I have a motion for sections 14G, 14H, 14G1, take it and block, a motion to, to waiver this requirement. Do we have to waiver it for it?
No, I'm asking to take them and block, so we don't have to do all three separately.
No, we're not doing it. I did, I just wrote them all together.
All right, so, so.
We didn't vote on it.
We had.
No, no.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now I make a motion to accept the request for the waiver.
There's the extension.
Waiver.
No, waiver.
We got the waiver.
No, she didn't do the waiver, she wanted, she wanted to do it in a block.
Oh, to do it in a block.
We have to vote on the block.
Did you get me confused?
We voted on the block.
Okay, we voted, okay, all of this. Now, the waivers, a motion is in order for the waivers.
So moved.
So moved. Have a motion made in seconded to accept the waiver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, motion carries. Now, the motion is in order to, for the extension.
So moved, two years, second.
Okay, motion made in seconded for a two-year extension, any discussion? You're not called for, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
All right.
That's done.
And, all right.
Now we can discuss. The, um, there was a cost estimate, and then I have the Ness and Associates here, they put together the cost estimate.
Well, the bond, we don't have to do the bond now, because we still have a covenant on 17 lots.
You mean the, okay.
So I, I request, remember I asked, what we gotta do is get an estimate.
This is the request.
Yeah, that's the estimate.
That's the attachment, okay? That's what the, yeah, no, no. The bond is done when the total value of the remaining property, okay, is less than.
The bond amount.
Okay, the bond. So the, the, what I need is, from the assessors, what is the, the 17 remaining lots?
A value.
What is the volume, what is the value of that 17 lots? And if that value of the 17 lots exceeds, okay, the bond requirement, with estimate that we have, then we don't, the bond isn't required at this time. Okay, and just the, and, and they can just go forward with the, the release of the covenant, and we can release the covenant.
So, well, while they're here, I just have one question. So the 1.47 million, that, does that include, oh, 1.525 million, right? That's the total cost of remaining.
1.47 from Meadowlands subdivision, and then there's about 55,000 on the outside.
Okay, so that's the total for both, and that's, that's real time, right now, right?
Yep.
I didn't want them to waste all their time here for, no, I didn't even question it, they could give a couple more. Jeez, feels bad.
So, so where we are is, what we need before I can release the covenant is an estimate from the assessors.
Yes.
Okay, on the remain, the value of the remaining property.
Okay, we can get that.
Okay, and then we'll do that for the next meeting, and we'll, we'll release it.
And should it not exceed that, put a bond in place for the.
And then we put the bond in. Okay?
Next.
Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for sitting here all night, you know, geez. Sorry to do that to you.
Okay. 6.5, MU2 proposed zoning change, plan review, propose the housing committee, discuss the votes of planning director.
First and last. No, no idea, right? Oh, it's all right.
Thank you.
This is MU2, so we gotta get those.
So this, this also, for the board, for the record, came from the housing committee. And the housing committee worked with a consultant, Mr. from MRPC, Mr. Joseph Boyle. And then we worked with the developer who owns the entire portion of the MU2 zoning code.
Makes use to.
And the developers here.
Okay, what the hell, we have so much paper. I lost it.
So, we're here tonight to discuss the multi-use, multi-use district two. There is one multi-use district two in the city, it's where Best Buy is. The purpose of this district, when it was originally created, was to allow for both large-scale commercial development and large-scale multifamily residential development. But making sure that the commercial element was put in, and the city's economic development just were being protected, and the site wasn't, wasn't completely overrun by residential. Since that was done three or four decades ago, there's been significant commercial development within the property. Two or three big-box stores now exist there. The residential component hasn't had cut up, and meanwhile, the world has changed since this zoning was created. There's considerably less demand for commercial and retail space owing to the home delivery detail. And we're now in a housing crisis that we weren't, were back then, and some of the, and therefore, it makes more sense to welcome residential development and not, so to speak, hold it hostage to further commercial development as some of the language in this MU2 district requires. So what is the pledge of the board? Would you like me to go through the proposed changes one by one, or you've seen?
Yeah, one, one section, the next, yes.
Okay. So the first change would be to make apartment multifamily dwellings allowed by right in the district. The second change would be to make some dimensional changes. Let's go over what those are. We are getting rid of the category non-multifamily, okay? It's now just multifamily dwellings and others. We are also making, allowing this by right. Rather than, rather than requiring a special permit for reduction in square, square footage per unit. We are setting a, an allowed by right, we're lowering the allowed by right square foot per unit and setting one rather than a reduction. So right now, it's 3,500 for multifamily, it's 3,500 square feet per unit by right, and 2,500 per unit by, by spec, by special permit. I'm opposing to reduce that to 2,000 per unit and allow that by right.
So why would you go to a even lower number than the special permit? The special permit, you had 2,500 square feet per unit, and you went to 2,000.
Basically, the purpose of that is, this is really the location in the city where you can really give residential developers their head, allow them to build, to. This is where Leavenster can allow the highest, the most intensive residential development. It's not in anyone's neighborhood. As a matter of fact, it's buffered from people's neighborhoods. It's not going in next to anybody. It's also not, certainly not gonna be detrimental to the commercial that's in there if the residential that gets built has more units. Basically, why am I lowering this? Because by, because the instructions I were given was to try to propose amendments to the zoning that would allow for more, that would allow for more residential development, and I feel that it can be responsibly done here.
More bang for your buck in this, in this space.
More bang for your buck in this space.
Where else do we have MU2?
There's only one, that's it, there's the one.
MU2 is the, the basically target.
Okay, so if you want to look closely at the dimensional requirements. You can see.
No, I noticed.
The changes I've already, yes, sorry.
I got a couple here that I, I can ask the questions, because there's, there's so much different, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Like your, and, and I'm just gonna look at the special permit, because that was always our, our highest requirement. You could, you know, side yard, we had 100 feet, and you change in that to 30?
Yeah, do, do notice, though, that that 100 feet was abiding residential, residential district.
Okay.
So it was only 100 feet in the, abiding the residential district.
So does that stay?
It was 25.
25, it's a residential.
Because I know, yeah, but we usually want more of a distance between the sides. I'm just trying to.
Use.
We made the commitment years ago to protect the residence there from a, a high-rise, and in good planning, traditionally, you don't go from residential A to, to high-density.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Without a substantial, some kind of a buffer in between.
Yes.
And, and that's how I'm afraid if I go to 15 feet, I would not consider that a buffer.
Okay, right, your side yard, the side yard setback here, though, is not meant to be the buffer around the edge of the district.
Well, the side yard, but the green yard, you got the same.
We have, we have other, there, further down, there is, there's specific buffer about the edge of the district. Think about internally in the district, if there were a couple of residential projects that were done, or a single residential project that was done, and. And with multifamily buildings on lots, those, their side yard setbacks from each other needed to be the same as the, as the, to protect the, are, the, are a district from. I, I, I think a, a smaller side yard setback internally, for what these buildings would have from each other, that, that the 15 feet is appropriate. Whereas what you're talking about around the buffer, I do.
That's internal.
That's internal.
Okay.
Now, now.
You're talking about replacing the buffer, you get 50 feet.
Right, right.
You guess, you go that to 40? Number seven?
Yes.
Yeah, we gotta log you there, sir.
Shall we open it to the audience?
I have Mr. LaScotty here. Would you like to speak on this motion?
Sure. David Gregory Stadi, Stadi's lovely, he's really good at carpentry, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members. So I had, had a lot of interest of late with various carpet folks, as you know, London's a gateway city. There's a lot of, you know, some state funding available for, for sale, homeownership as well as carpets. And as Joe mentioned, you know, this, this project, I, believe it or not, the shopping center will be opened 20 years, I think, already. Wow. And, you know, we really haven't, you know, we've got, I think, 17 acres behind the shopping center, and then another updeveloped land, and then probably another, I don't know, 30-something acres developed. At the end of the road, we just hope that we were, were a pioneer, you know, it should go Intersect. So what, what this is doing, and they invited me to participate on the last two housing committee meetings, which was taken up and, and endorsed by the housing committee, and I support. There was a few other things in here that didn't make it to the board this evening, but basically cleaning up a lot of the 2012, I don't know, hangovers that don't make any sense. As Joe was pointing out, the lots, the dimensions in between the districts, and you've got to remember that, you know, when we did the MU2 stuff, it's kind of developed and owned or as a cohesive unit. And I own and or have developed everything in this district, which is around, I think it's around 120 acres. So I own everything that's in MU2, so all the internal, if you will, lot lines are on myself, my left hand, my right hand, and that's it. So the only buffer that really buffs any residences is, is along, is probably, I don't know, maybe six houses that are probably. Because the end, if you remember, the end of.
That was Sky Lane.
Sky Lane, you know, the city already owns a huge piece of land when they did that as an open space project, so we're only, only fighting.
It's not that much, yeah.
It's literally half a dozen houses.
I think there's one house on Harvest Street.
Nothing, I mean, I think the Harper house sits on quite a few acres, I believe, and then a couple other that.
Right.
Back in as a wetland system, and if you look at the plan, which I presented at the housing committee, you know, we've got some significant geography. If you remember, when I did this project, I knew something like a half a million yards of fill, I mean, we flat and still. So between the back of, like, where Bob's Furniture is, and Target, it is a natural, possible, wetland system, and you get some geography, so we've got those challenges to work with there. And so that's why I kind of had to take the whole changes kind of in totality, and just the correct one, and as Joe said, we, we are allowed, I think, today, I forget the number, something like 12 or 14 units per acre already by right.
Right.
And we leveraged, the committee left most of the bulk dimensional requirements the same, meaning you could still do four stories and whatever, like, 70 feet.
70 feet.
That's, that's what's in the current zoning today, that's not being proposed to change, Joe, it's just really the one rear setback that fucks the residents with, and the effigent, it's all internal. So this, this really enables us to really, I think, give us some more flexibility, and it gives the board some flexibility to use it up to you on certain buffers, and really just cleans up a lot. One of the, one of the issues that, I don't know how this got through the last time, but it requires, it is a requirement for, like, retail on the first floor of a apartment or a building, which makes less than zero sense in this.
That was done when, in the 2012, zoning change.
I'm not sure how I missed that one myself.
Yeah, we'll get rid of that.
It makes no sense, so that would obviously go away, I think, why would you do retail on the bottom of a, you know, three or four-story, you know, apartment or, you know, kind of those developed, it makes no sense, so. It was really a lot, you know, that's really how we got this.
Let me give you a, a little bit of background. As we wrote the original ordinance, it was thought that, hey, you know, retail, industrial, commercial, mixed use, and we took a one-third, one-third, one-third. Just an idea, with no facts at the time, let's try it, see if it works, because we had had a substantial piece of property that quite a few developers had looked at and turned it down. So it says, how do we make this land that was industrial usable and make it feasible for developers to use? So that's when we came up with the mixed use, saying if you develop the whole piece of property and you go one-third, one-third. So we got the commercial part, the industrial is not materializing, I don't see it. Fort Devens is expanding, and they're stocking up anything that moves west for industrial property. So I don't see it, so our next thing is residential, and we should use residential, because we have, we have a need in the city. So with more knowledge today, we should move forward. The only concern I had was to make sure that we adequately protect the neighbors, because we're going from, you know, a high. we're going from, you know, basically high-rise building next to residential, and typically that's not good planning.
So what do you want now? There's no action.
The planning board has to petition the city council.
So we have to petition the city council.
They don't come back to the board in a public hearing.
I move that we do exactly that.
I second that.
As is?
No, we're going to make some corrections.
We're going to make, you know, we'll have to review it.
But no, but we're petitioning it as is.
We shouldn't petition it as is, we should take a little bit of time to study this.
Well, then we can't make the motion.
That's right. I would say we continue this.
And we'll continue on this.
You want to have more discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. It's just a minor changes.
It's a little information to me.
How about we start a discussion?
And everybody seems to be in agreement, but we want to make sure of setbacks and everything else.
Well, so, all right, but why can't we make the petition as is, and then when it comes back to us for the public, then, I mean, what you're doing is your, you want to review it based upon a petition.
When it comes back to us, we make changes as needed.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Yeah, why don't we do it that way? I'd rather do it that way as well.
Based on my experience at the city council last time, I'd really like to modify this based on your suggestions before they see it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that was, make it better, you only get, you only get one chance to make a first impression.
Okay, that's, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just thinking in terms of the process, doesn't it come to us first before it goes to them?
It's at you, then it goes to them, then it goes to you, then it goes to them.
It's a multi.
So, yeah, I agree.
Let's continue this to the next meeting, but it's just communication, so nothing to continue.
That's right.
Let's continue, so let's come back with.
I will put it on not to.
Yeah, with that same information.
Well, actually, Elizabeth, the housing committee will make the changes.
Okay, I.
The housing committee was happy with this draft, so they already made their changes.
Okay.
I'd really like to get the board to.
So it's up to the board now to layer on that and make their changes.
But you can, you know, you think that it could be better based on what we've talked about in the previous discussion.
All right, Joe. Some of the, some of the things I've heard, all right, what I've heard based on the previous, on the discussion so far, is that we need to make sure that this buffer, this buffer language 28.5 is sufficiently protective. But I think that if we make the exterior buffer sufficiently protective, that my dimensional requirements are okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, all right, so we passed number two here, the dimensional table. I just, I was just thinking, I'd walk you through each item just because they're, you know, change references. Number three, number four, yeah, number three and number four are about getting rid of requirements for doing commercial and allowing purely residential.
Right.
I believe that's probably at this time in history. Number five, 28.4 dimensional regulations, okay, this is also buffer language. Oh, no, no, this is also 28.4, delete item, 28.41, this is getting rid of commercial requirements, and we designate, and then we, and renumber the other ones. Leaving 28.4.2 is fine, that's it. If there's a true mixed-use project, if he comes in with commercial and upper-story residential, but right now we're pretty much just thinking about residential. Number six, this is the buffer language.
Yes, 30 feet.
Yeah, let's see, there, okay, there were two, okay, the number six is about an internal buffer, it's about different land uses inside the MU2, if you're putting a condominium campus next to a Target, okay? That's an internal buffer between the two land uses.
Okay.
I'm proposing to change that land use to give the board more discretion. There might be cases when it's not necessary. I think we're all a little bit more enlightened now about concepts of mixed-use zoning and lockable mixed neighborhoods, and having some types of stores next to some types of housing is perfectly appropriate. So I'm opposed to leave that to your discretion rather than a hard rule, that's number six. And number seven is the external buffer, and now, this is the one I'd like, I want to make sure that I'm providing is sufficiently protective.
Right.
This was, it required a 50-foot buffer between any development within the MU2 district and an adjacent residential zoning district. Now, we're proposing that there shall be a buffer between the MU2 district and any adjacent residential zoning district.
30 feet.
It is, well, up to 40 feet at your discretion.
So 10 feet? Reduce that by 10 feet. So we're just really eliminating 10 feet.
Well, before it was a required 50-foot buffer, now it is up to, now it's discretionary at up to 40 feet.
Up to 2 could be up.
If you felt, if you felt it's, the plan he came in with had, he happens to have a street of single-family homes abutting, you're abutting residential district, then maybe you don't need a 50-foot buffer, and your regular, your regular setback requirements would be sufficiently protected. If he's putting a 70-foot, a 70-foot story multifamily or office tower or something there, yes, you are going to want to use that discretion.
So why don't we keep it up to 50 feet with discretion?
If it's discretion, why?
Just leave it the way it is, you know, with discretion. We're very discreet.
Okay.
So it's going to be consistent with number six, and we just get the discretion of the planning board to take, and then just to omit?
Yep. That discretion of the planning board, but no case shall be required to exceed 50 feet.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, okay, we're leaving that in?
Yes.
Yeah.
But instead of hard 50 is discretionary.
Right.
Okay.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, now, you used to have a multifamily abutting residential district, whether by right had, or by special permit, had 100-foot set aside yard setback.
From right to?
Yeah, we're abutting residential district, where this is abutting a residential district.
Yeah.
I understand the desire to be protective, but 100 feet under all circumstances, that strikes me as excessive, that you can provide a very good perfection with a vegetated buffer half that, achieve everything you're trying to do, and not impinge on the build-up potential of a residential.
I think that had a lot to do with, well, the industrial stuff and built up into the neighborhoods, you know, you need.
Well, because we didn't know if we're going to get industrial in.
Yes.
So we're talking about industrial buildings versus residential.
For stack up and, you know, go higher than 100 feet sometimes.
Yes, if the board felt it's necessary to add another line on here for dimensions in case commercial, residential, no, I'm sorry, commercial or industrial was developed, then I could potentially do that. We could still have a line on here for industrial.
For industrial.
Yeah, I think it would be a smart thing to do.
Just in case.
Doesn't close out the options and put.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't affect if it, for a line of industrial, I think that, this was the thinking, was at the time, we had no idea, but yeah.
Okay, so.
Keep it in mind.
Okay, so I could, now, I've got this other category, okay, so I could leave, I propose to leave the other category as it is, so we'll have multifamily dwellings, industrial up. And we'll use.
Would commercial come under other?
Yes, commercial would come under other.
And that would be the discretionary up to 50 feet? For commercial?
Yes.
Not industrial?
Correct. Right, for commercial and residential, yes, it would only be this industrial.
Yeah, so the other would be, either would be industrial.
Well, another neighborhood would be the same thing, we'd use other buildings as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
The basic philosophy here is that what goes on in this district, you should allow a very intensive development, this is where you can really let the developer build the housing you need, and buffer it from your neighborhoods.
Right. Okay.
So excellent, I will come back with a new and improved version of this.
Can you have it? The next meeting is the 21st, but to get it into practice, I would need it.
So, but can we?
I will have this one, I will have this one by the end of the week.
Okay.
It's the RBRRC, I think.
Well, no, why don't we just vote it with the recommended changes?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
And then just rewrite, then all you got to do is give the recommended changes.
And then we're going.
Give the recommended changes to me, and I'll put it in with the petition.
Yes. So.
The second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve this recommendation with additional, additional changes as discussed.
So it looks like MU2 and upper-story residential are now going directly to the city council, and I'll be back to you about RBRRC.
Yeah.
Okay, any trade discussion on this? You don't want to call for the vote?
Yes.
All favor say aye? All say no? Motion carries.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
We're getting there.
Just a heads up, just as a communication to the board, with the housing committee continues to work, and the next thing I'm going to be coming in with is map stuff regarding your C commercial districts, looking at redrawing their boundaries to actually follow lot lines, and make some sense, because right now they're just arbitrary distances, and to avoid splitting lots, as well as some of the commercial districts, I'm going to propose we change to different business districts, the BA and Bs.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for hanging on.
It's been late, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't.
Where am I?
Thank you, Mr. LaScotti.
6.6.
Draft subdivision flow tracks, okay.
Can we, I, yeah, can we table this? It's 9:15, and this isn't going to make any sense to me until tomorrow.
Do you want to put this on?
We'll table that.
October 21st?
Sure.
Yeah, as long as there aren't 10 items under communication.
Yeah.
And there should never be 10 items.
Yes.
Proposed subdivision amendment, we just did that, 6.8, city council petition.
No, no, we didn't do 6.7.
We didn't do 6.7.
Oh, sorry about that. Proposed subdivision amendment, planning board can have a registered engineer of their choosing for the estimates, planning board to review and make a suggestion.
So this is something that John and I put together, because we've been having common practice to go, instead of to the DPW for estimates, we've been going to professional engineers for estimates for subdivision processes, and it doesn't state that in our ordinance or our regulations, it says that we go to the DPW, so we really need to say in our regulations that, and there's three places where it should say that, and they're in your memo underlined, where instead of just saying, in consultation with public works, we should say, and also consultation with a registered professional engineer chosen by the planning board. That way, we all know why we've moved that direct hint, but we need to also say in our regulations that we've got her.
What was happening, the DPW was looking at the road, maybe the sidewalk, but they weren't looking at the trees and the other.
We need to have a public hearing on this, and so.
So November 4th?
On a subdivision amendment, we do, as opposed to an ordinance amendment?
Yes, subdivision is our own.
We advertise them.
And we have to advertise it, and we vote it.
Is November 4th due?
November 4th is due.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded for November 4th. Any discussion? You don't want to call for vote, all favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no, motion carries. City council petition, 10.25, Peter A. Conopabaso, Esquire, behalf of Five SAC Self-Storage Corporation, request to amend section 2217, underlying district table uses of the limits of zoning ordinance under busy use table uses into multi-use MU1, underlining zone district, change self-storage facility use from no, not allowed to either, yes, allowed by right or special permit, planning board special permit required, courts on limit zoning ordinance, self-storage categories as a business, but is only allowed in the industrial zone district.
Okay, we only need to schedule this for a public hearing, we don't need to discuss it at all.
Fine, so November 4th at 6:40?
We have, what time was the subdivision amendment?
6:35?
6.
Right, mainly at 6:30.
We have 6:30, 6:31, 6:35, so 6:40.
And then that'll be it for them.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded for November 4th at 6:40. Any discussion? You don't want to call for vote, all favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no, motion carries. Reappoint planning board director Elizabeth Wood, due term 10/31/24.
We have to do this by term.
10/31/27, discuss.
Once we hire.
No discussion.
No, I, I know it's late, but I have to just, I said this three years ago, and I have to bring it up again, because I find this just dishonest, and this is no reflection of, because I think you're great, I just, I've circled a lot of boards, I'm sure, but I've never seen where you just put an agenda item, and there's no evaluation, there's no review, there's no, it's just, here we go, let's vote, it makes no sense as a matter of practice, and before we reappoint anybody, again, not about you at all, because I'm sure it will be positive and should go through, but there should be some form for evaluation, and some mechanism for us to review that before we.
We have had that in the past, okay, at first when somebody was appointed, and then to tell you the truth, we have had a very hard problem getting anybody to volunteer for it. So it's one of these cases where she's willing to do it, she's more than qualified.
And she's great, it's not about her, it just makes no sense as a matter of practice.
We shouldn't have to, she can hide in the position, it's her as until.
Until she doesn't want to.
Does something, or she doesn't want.
Well, no, we're required by, you know, just.
It's the city charter or something like that.
So does the mayor weigh in on things?
It's the charter, the charter thing.
You got to be with the mayor.
It will be up to the board, I don't get a review.
Oh, you don't get a review?
They don't do reviews in the city.
All the more reason.
The job does no reviews, the mayor does no review.
How would we ever know if the job should change or shift, or there should be other things or less things?
It's up to the board to figure it out.
I think he should run for mayor.
No, I just take my job seriously.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, there's a lot of things we can.
And I raised this last time you came up, which was, I guess, a year ago, because you had a shorter appointment, right? I made the same speech last time this was on the agenda, we reappointed you.
Okay.
But, so, and I'll do it three years from now if nothing happens, because I just think it's absurd as a matter of business practice, so that's.
Let's stand, I want to make a motion to reappoint.
Have a motion made and seconded.
Because I think it's just a stupid thing to have.
All favor say aye?
We know.
All say no for us. Motion carries.
Second.
Already passed. Director's report, planning development director report.
Okay, I'll be very fast. I ordered new subdivision books to be printed, it was only $145 for 50 books, so that's what we're getting. If we have a bunch of amendments, it's only $145, we can print them again in another This next one, I'll let John kind of weigh in on this one, because he spoke to the mayor.
Here goes, here goes.
Can this one leave?
No, this one is waiting.
We're going to take a look at it, his primary thing was look at MU1, and the categories, what we have in MU1.
I suggest that we look at any zoning amendments after all these petitions that we've just submitted to the city council, are opened on last Thursday.
You want to wait until this goes through?
Plus, you know, we're getting feedback from MRC, and, you know, we've got all sorts of stuff going on, so we're not ready for that.
So we can move that out.
Yep.
Executive session, thoughts out?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, all favor say aye?